That's so funny.
All right. So I think at the top of the hour here, at seven o'clock, we're going to start our workshop, portion of our meeting.
Sorry, seven.
For which, no rush. Natalie was going to walk us through some of the requirements of the HDLO, somewhat of a refresher.
Yeah.
And then the other item, well, we want to kind of open, depending on how much time we have, we kind of want to open just to the group, the conversation around, you know, other potential workshop topics, things we might want to discuss amongst ourselves as part of workshop, or otherwise hear from our attorney, your planners, or engineer.
Yeah, I think we decided next month we'll do Seeker again, just to refresh everybody, but then we have the whole rest of the year to fill with fun training opportunities. So yeah, today we're going to talk about historic preservation regulations within the City of Beacons Code. There's an overlay and then the underlying zoning, so this is a little bit unique, so we'll spend some time going through it, both for the board and for the public, to understand what the board's looking at when we say a property is in the HDLO or is designated. So Chapter 134 is the City of Beacons Historic Preservation Code, and we'll kind of walk through that. Just so everyone knows, all municipalities in New York State have, most municipalities in New York State have their code available online. If you type in Ecode and the city or the municipality you're looking for, the full code should come up online, so just for folks who may be following along at home. So one, Chapter 134, which is outside of the typical zoning code for the City of Beacon. So the purpose of this chapter, as you would expect, is to encourage the preservation of properties that are of special historical or architectural significance in the City of Beacon specifically. So the HDLO is what we say, and that stands for Historic District and Landmark Overlay Zone. As an overlay, I think the unique aspect here is that these regulations are in addition to the underlying zoning designation. So that's when you see that projects will come before you, they will say, "I am in the CMS and the HDLO," or "I am in the R15 and the HLO," because you layer on top, it's not one or the other. The HLO is additional regulations on top of the underlying zoning. There's a process first, let's talk about how we get something to be designated. So designation in the City of Beacon can be initiated by the City Council, the Planning Board, the property owner themselves, or a preservation committee, yes?
This is a designation on the parcel, not necessarily the building? Or is it, could it be either?
It could be either, yeah, depending on the nature of the site. But it's to get anything designated within the HDLO, any of these bodies can bring forth that application.
Got it, thank you.
Yep. And then within this, the subsection four, there's a bunch of regulations about what has to happen in terms of process, that I'm not going to focus on too much there, but just so you know, like if the council is bringing something forward, they have to, there's a process of notifying the property owner, a public hearing is always held for a designation nomination, and then the deciding body, the City Council, has to decide within 60 days of that public hearing. So just, there's always like a notification process in case the property owner is not the one bringing forward the application to be designated. And then to designate a property, there's usually one of three criteria that a property, a building, or a site will fall within. It either has distinguishing architectural characteristics that represent a certain period, style, or method of construction. It can be a more simple structure that is just associated with a cultural, political, or social, historical moment, or person, or organization. Or it can be listed on, as eligible for inclusion on the state or national registers. So there's three levels of historic designation, there's national, state, and then local level. And we're talking specifically about the local level today. So like we said, it's an overlay on the zoning map, so you can find the city zoning map on the city's website, and the parcels identified in red, as the key's very small here, but what the key says is, "All these parcels that are identified in this red hatch are HDLO properties that have been designated either within a district or as an individual parcel." And then, so Certificate of Appropriateness is required for all exterior alterations, construction, or demolition that affect historic feature of one of these sites, right, that are in the HDLO. No building permit can be issued until a certificate of appropriateness is approved by the Planning Board, so the Building Department is the first one to kind of usually catch these, if there's modifications to a historic structure. Typically, a building permit is filed, and then the Building Department, you know, marks that as requiring approval by the Planning Board, or a COA from the Planning Board. Maintenance is typically exempt. There's a, there's a whole Section 134-6 that kind of talks about different types of maintenance that are exempt from review, so not all change, not all work on historic structure requires review, but it's if you are changing something of the appearance. And then that goes a little bit deeper, so alteration, construction or demolition, alteration is specifically defined in the code, and here's that language I was talking about, it's a change, right? Visible from a public street, public sidewalk, or public park, so usually interior, typically interior work, there is some kind of, at state level, and I don't know if it's necessarily in the local, if you're doing interior work and it's a publicly accessible space, that will sometimes be subject to a COA as well, but it's typically exterior work that is visible to the public. And then here's kind of the list, it excludes typical maintenance, repair, or replacements, excludes plumbing and electrical work, or minor accessory utility work, that don't substantially detract from the historic nature of the property. So now you have to jump in, so 134-5 in this chapter, then kicks you back to the typical zoning code, so you have to kind of jump around in our code. So you have to jump back to the zoning code to 223-24.7, that is where the code lists uses that are permitted by special permit within the HDLO. So again, because it's an overlay, there's uses that are permitted in whatever the underlying zoning is, and then this list here is additional uses that are specifically allowed in the, on HDLO properties in order to allow for the active use and rehabilitation of those sites. And those are broken up into two categories, there's specialized businesses that are associated with history, arts, or culture, so this is not an all-inclusive list, but artist studios, antique shops, rare book, coin, or stamp shops, or similar kind of historical or cultural uses. There's a second category of uses that are permitted by special permit, and these are categorized as residential, hotel, or professional uses, and each one of these kind of comes with a cap or a stipulation associated with it, right? So restaurants, up to 50 seats, bed and breakfast establishments, up to 10 rooms, professional offices, up to 10 employees, multifamily, up to four units, so everything's kind of capped to keep these, these more, I'd say, commercial uses kind of limited. And then hotels and hotel-related accessory uses with adequate screening. There is also a section in 223-24.7 that does allow for some deviation from these, allows for some deviation from these kind of caps on this second grouping, and the Planning Board, this is at the discretion of the Planning Board, and the Planning Board must look at the building size, the building's configuration, the nature of the proposed preservation or adaptive reuse of the building, or the historic nature and context of the building, and the need for preservation, adaptive reuse. So there is kind of a release valve, if maybe somebody is proposing a larger restaurant or a greater number of multifamily. If the site and the building kind of demand that larger, or not demand, but facilitate that larger use, there is ability for the Planning Board to approve that. And then for these special permits, when the Planning Board is looking at special permit uses on an HDLO site, they must look at the following findings before granting that. And I've kind of broken them up, they're listed as only four, but I broke them up so we could go through them a little bit easier. So exterior restoration maintains architectural and historic integrity, new construction is compatible with neighboring structures, the proposed use is compatible with the neighborhood, activities can be adequately buffered from surrounding homes, specifically residential homes, resulting traffic generation will not overburden existing roads, adequate parking can be provided without unduly destroying kind of the landscape and setting, a lot of our historic sites have kind of larger open spaces or landscape spaces surrounding them, so you want parking to be provided, but without kind of diminishing that, that natural setting of the historic site. And then the Planning Board must also look to see that the proposed use is appropriate to the structure, will aid in the preservation of the structure, will not result in undue alterations or enlargement of the structure. And so again, these standards in the HLO are in addition to, there's typical special permit standards that you're always looking at for a special permit use, which I think we went over in February, and I'm sure we'll go over again at some point, as well as the HDLO standards in Chapter 134. So now you kind of leave the zoning code again, and you go back to, you go back to Chapter 134. So then there are an additional level of kind of criteria, things to look at, if you were looking at properties that require site plan approval, so anything over one family or two family, things that require site plan approval, or a special permit, or things that are specifically in the CMS, the Main Street District. And when looking at those, there's been, there's an additional section of criteria, which is 134-7, that look at the kind of appropriateness of the development to the property, the scale and height, and then architectural kind of elements of the building and the site. So we don't have to go through all of these, I don't think, in detail, but I think something worth noting is, what we've been asking from applicants in front of the Planning Board lately, is that they go through each one of these, and you hear from the designer, from the project team who is creating the development plan, to kind of go through these and talk about how they feel their project responds to these criteria that you're looking at. So would it be helpful to go through each one of these, or, yeah? Okay.
Especially since you have a couple of applicants' applications within the HDLO.
It's good, just.
I want to make sure that we're.
Yeah, so first category A, so there's A, B, and C, so we'll go through each one of these. So A is looking at the design, character, and appropriateness of the property, and to the property of the proposed alterations or new construction. So construction shall build on the historic context, with applications required to demonstrate aspects of inspiration from similarities to adjacent HDLO structures or historic buildings in the surrounding area, so we should see images and photos kind of within these presentations saying, "This is what we've tried to mimic with this roof style, or this window style," if we're seeing new construction. Compatibility does not imply historic reproduction, but new architecture shall also not arbitrarily impose contrasting materials, scales, color, colors, or design features. So the intent is to reinforce and extend traditional patterns of the HDLO district, but new structures may still be distinguishable in up-to-date technologies and details most evident in window construction interiors. And this is really aligned with the State Department of Interiors that looks at state historic districts, and there's been a recent, not so recent, but over the last few decades, a shift in historic preservation of moving away from replication more to compatibility, right? So you, it's actually, you'll often see comments from SHPO, from the state, asking for new construction to be distinguishable from the historic architecture, so that you're not mimicking or arbitrarily kind of expanding the historic building. They want the historic aspect to be very visible, and the new construction not to be identical, but to be compatible, right? Finally, number four is exterior accessory elements such as signs, lighting fixtures, and landscaping shall emphasize continuity with adjacent properties in the HDLO, and the historic characteristics of the sidewalk and streetscape. And where possible, parking shall be placed towards the rear of the property in an unobtrusive location with adequate screening from public views, unless other, another location provides better screening. So Section B is looking at the scale and height of the proposed alteration or new construction in relation to the property itself and surrounding properties of the neighborhood. So where possible, in addition to an historic structure, should be placed towards the rear or at least recessed, so that the historic structure remains more prominent than the subsidiary addition. Any alteration or addition to historic structure shall not damage or obscure character-defining features of the architecture or site to the maximum extent possible. The height of any new building facades in the HDLO shall not conflict with the heights of adjacent historic structures on adjoining HDLO parcels. And larger buildings or additions should incorporate significant breaks in facades and roof lines, generally at intervals no more than 35 feet. So this is something similar that we see in the language in the linkage district and the CMS district, about kind of breaking up facades. Yep.
I'm sorry, I'm just reading that number four, so I can be absolutely clear. Larger buildings or additions should incorporate significant breaks in the facades and roof lines, okay, got it.
Yeah, just to kind of break up the massing, right? Yep.
That I'm familiar with.
Yep.
I was thinking of that.
And then the third section is looking at architectural and site elements and their relation to similar features of other properties in the HDLO, so going a little bit beyond the site. So it's not appropriate to disrupt the relationship between a historic building and its front yard or landscape, including screening historic properties from traditional street views by high walls or hedges, also obviously by buildings themselves, right? And this kind of goes back to the last section of buildings being set back or behind. Historic storefronts, porches, cornices, window and door surrounds, or similar architecture features should not be enclosed, obscured, or removed, so that the character of the structure is substantially changed. Deteriorated building features should be repaired rather than being replaced, and if not repairable, should be replicated in design material and other historic qualities. New buildings in the HDLO shall have a top-floor cornice feature or eve, and first-floor architectural articulation, such as an architecturally emphasized entrance doorway or porch, to accent kind of the central body of the building. Five is that architectural features and windows shall be continued on all sides that are clearly visible from the street or public parking area, avoiding any blank walls except in cases of existing walls or potential common property walls. And then new HDLO buildings shall have a front entrance door facing the primary street and connected to the sidewalk. Oh, sorry, this goes on to Ted, this is the long section, yeah. Window proportions shall be greater in height than in width, but you, the Planning Board as approving body may allow exceptions for storefront windows or transom windows. And then mirrored, reflected, or tinted glass is not permitted, and shutters shall match the size of the windows. Finished building materials should be wood, brick, traditional cement-based stucco, stone, smooth cast stone, there's a whole list here, I think what's worth pointing out is vinyl, aluminum, or sheet metal siding, or sheet trim, exposed concrete blocks or concrete walls, plywood and other similar prefabricated panels, or unpainted or unstained lumber, synthetic rough cup stone, synthetic brick, basically anything synthetic, EPIS or DAFF, I've never heard this one, direct applied finish system, DAFFs, and chain link plastic or vinyl fencing are not permitted. Materials and colors should complement the historic buildings on the block, fluorescent, neon, metallic, and other intentionally garish, that's one of my favorite words, Orwell, as well as stripes, dots, and other incompatible patterns shall be prohibited. And then finally, mechanical equipment and refuse containers shall be concealed from the public view. So these are things that we kind of do here in the regular code, but I think they're also, they're reemphasized here in the, in the, Chapter 134. There is a release valve, or an opportunity, if a applicant applies for a certificate of appropriateness from the Planning Board and they are denied, or I think if they, I think, I don't know if they necessarily have to be denied, or they can just choose to go, this option is, there is a request for a hardship, and you, that would be handled by the ZBA, not the Planning Board, and in order to receive that hardship kind of granting, they must prove that no reasonable, they can get no reasonable return from any other use of the property, or a use of the property that would be approved by the board, there's no viable adaptive reuse, other than what they're proposing, and that they've had failed attempts to sell the property to somebody else who might be able to do the work that would be approved by the reviewing body. So it's in all three of those, so it is pretty hard to achieve that, or demonstrate that hardship. So that's it, that is, so that's Chapter 134, and again, I think we talked about this a little bit, maybe it was during the last meeting, and that you were probably picking up as we were going through this, is there's a lot of room for discretion within this code, right? There's shoulds, and compatible, and like art, those thing, you have to kind of go through those, each one of those, whether something is compatible is unique, I think, to the site, to the district it's in, to the surrounding properties, so it does require a lot of discussion, which often happens between the Planning Board and applicants when going through these criterias. It's not necessarily just a box you can check, like, yep, meets this.
Yeah, we love subjectivity here.
Yeah. Yes, and discretion.
Yeah.
Great. So any, I guess, any questions on that? So just reminding folks, it's kind of two sections of the code, you have to look at 134 and 223-24.7 are the two sections there. Also, a good resource, if you're looking at historic assets, is CRIS, it's a state-run website, C-R-I-S, Cultural Resource Inventory System, I believe is what that's for, and you can use that as a guest, and if you go in there and type in a, an address, you can see all different types of resource, of historic resources around that site. They try to track local, state, and national resources, and you can kind of even, for some of them, see the background information for those, like what the designating language was, or the designation form that was approved when they filed for their designation, so it's a good resource. That's it.
Thank you. Any, any questions? Yeah, I think, you know, again, given that we have a number of applications under HDLO, it's good for this refresher, so thanks. And, you know, just as a reminder to board, that's, this is the criteria, we want to make sure that we're putting these applications on, or in terms of our scrutiny and review. So, what time is it? We've got 10 minutes. Or, actually, again, beacon time, we have 10 minutes, regular time, we have seven. Clock is always off. So we thought we'd just do a little bit of a query of the group on subject matter for future workshops.
Yeah, and I think at the end of last meeting, we maybe started the conversation, and there was conversation about maybe wanting to have, looking at some specific areas of the code that the Planning Board may want to discuss, making recommendations to the council about updates to the code, so I think the Transitional District came up specifically. I also had a note about parking lot design, but I don't know if that was me, or somebody else said that. So I think things like that would be helpful, too, we can kind of use these training sessions to review that section of code, and then discuss potential updates and modifications that the board may want to pose to the council.
Yeah, so as you mentioned, next month we'll do SECR, and that usually takes more than a half hour, but we can certainly fill that hour.
Yeah.
I do remember someone mentioning Lincoln, was that you?
The district.
Yeah. Just curious, I do remember that, so.
Yeah, I did, I did have one thought about submission requirements for the plans. I noticed that this session, some of our plans have really informative location plans and site plans that show adjacent properties, right? And I think anybody that's looking at these, I think, I think it'd be really useful for every plan, everything that gets submitted, to have like a location plan of where it is in the city, and then like a site plan of like the block and adjacent structures, because almost all these applications have a lot to do with the context that they're in, you know? And it really helps us get our handle on the sort of issues that are going to come up, to be able to focus on it and understand it better. And it's not tough to do.
Yeah, I agree, I think if there's a way we can help the City Council understand how we might want to revise language around requirements for submission, that's, that's a really great topic. I can, I can actually point specifically also to certificates of appropriateness, and making sure that we have good, clear communication out to applicants on what we, what we expect to see, what we sort of require, I think it's pretty loose at the moment, so we may want to work on that. So maybe it's just one, you know, general topic of submission requirement that we drill down into?
Yep.
That's a good one. Thanks, Kevin, good suggestion. Yeah, and again, I don't remember what context we, or linkages came up, and so I'm not really certain what we might want to focus on there. So we should give that some thought.
Sorry, Ms. Nelson.
Honestly don't remember what context linkages came up in, so I'm not exactly sure what we would want to focus on there.
I think, oh, I thought the conversation was transit, the transition, T District.
Oh, okay.
That's what I had in my notes, and I think it's because it is a really unique district, but there's not necessarily the design criteria that we see in some of the other districts, like the CMS or the linkage.
Yeah.
So potentially thinking what might be appropriate for that area.
Actually, I think under the larger rubric of design criteria, we may want to start with that conversation?
Yeah.
And understand which specific districts have requirements around design?
Yeah.
You know, specifics, I wouldn't say guidelines, or, well, they are to some degree guidelines. And then maybe drill down into if there are districts that don't and should, or might want them, and then, you know, start the conversation about what those specifics might start to look like for each of those districts. I mean, that's a bit of a job, I think, but it's certainly worth starting to frame the conversation. It's one of those things, and I remember from years past, you know, in conversations with the city and the board, that we may want to recommend that the city, sort of extract from our workshop, and put together, you know, with consultancy, a committee to look at, review, and drill down into.
Yeah.
So we maybe want to talk about that, and what that recommendation to council looks like, what the process there might be. Sound good?
It sounds like a positive, you know, it's a good thing to put our efforts in, definitely.
What else? Any other juicy topics? Landscape, lighting?
Lighting, I think would be a good one, that's always a major topic.
Who wants to learn about stormwater management practices?
Boo. I do, I do. I want to know what SWIP stands for.
Do the energy code, no. I would love to see someone do a presentation on best practices on parking lot design and stormwater practices around parking lots, because I've seen some, I don't know whether they, whether they're like, something that's a good model, that seem really, that they solved a lot of problems, both with stormwater, not having like, having the retention entrances, like these depressed areas between the parking rows, instead of raised curbs, right, that seemed like infiltration areas, and.
Bio-retention.
Bio-retention. There's, and I've seen some of these things, just in my wandering around, that I thought, oh, that's a great idea, that's a great idea. And a lot of times, we haven't done a ton of large lots here, thank goodness, because I hate large parking lots, they're not a positive thing in any city, but when that is something that needs to get built, I think either having a, some sort of, sort of an incentive to use these best practices, as opposed to just doing the thing that's the cheapest, you know, would be a good thing.
And also understanding when they work and where they don't work, right? Because I know you're always telling me soils and things like that.
Oh, yeah, well, I know a lot of people are always pushing for infiltration, in the city, we have a lot of clay. You can't infiltrate water into clay, it just doesn't work, you're going to have a failing system.
Right.
You know, a lot of these systems work great, but the other key aspect is maintenance. People have to maintain these systems. If you don't, they eventually fail also.
So that's, I think that's a really good topic.
Yeah.
So we'll give John something to do. Get your PowerPoint ready.
I don't even know how to use PowerPoint.
Well, about to find out.
Good, yeah, I think this is a good crowdsourcing, we have some good ideas. Yeah, and if you think of anything else.
Email around. Is it possible to do like a, at some point, kind of like a, like a walkthrough of exemplary projects in other communities around the country that maybe are facing similar kind of development, you know, pressures, or just sort of like a state-of-the-state kind of?
Yeah, well, exemplary, I would, I would charge each Planning Board member to bring a project they think is exemplary, and then we can see who agree, like, you know, because I think exemplary is in the, what, you've got one?
Design standards in seaside Florida.
Okay.
You know that one, right?
Yeah, I mean.
Maybe it could be considered a little too restrictive and development prohibitive, but it's a good starting point.
Okay, but, yeah, I mean, I would say, if that's what you're looking for, like, were you talking about specifically about design standards, or?
Could be design standards, or it could be.
Master planning.
Yeah, or even just large projects that are considered particularly innovative, and, you know, maybe, again, it's new development, but it's well-adapted to an existing historic you know, maybe, again, it's new development, but it's well-adapted to an existing historic milieu, you know, stuff, just to see what other people are doing that is considered, you know, very effective.
I only say that I would charge each planning board member to bring that forward because it really is the eye of the beholder, right? So I do a lot of community engagement where we're showing visual preference boards, right? Where I'm showing different communities that have done different things, and I will get visceral reactions from different members of like, love that, hate that, that's the worst thing I've ever seen, that's the best thing I've ever seen. So it is, I would almost say it'd be helpful to share our examples of projects we think, and then I can dive deep on those, on the zoning regulations that may have formed those.
Good idea.
And the last thing is, is there anything specific? Well, we talked a little bit before about going around zone by zone and focusing on standards, but infill housing in historic neighborhoods, I just feel like we could look at some of the different approaches to that.
Sure. Yeah. Look at that. The rest of the year and part of next year for that.
I think once you get into the various zones and start breaking it down, it's going to be on its own.
Yeah, that's why I think it's one of those things that may be a sort of a standalone, right? I think if we start with sort of, kind of, you know, developing an understanding and an overview, then it may give us, you know, I think, good framework for, you know, helping to pull together some recommendations for how the city might approach that in committee.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because we all love committee work. All right.
I don't know how pertinent this would be. Everyone's background, I think, probably colors what they think might be pertinent, but would it be useful to have a session on judicial review? And basically, what are the, what are the frameworks that judicial review of board decision fit into? What is a court going to be looking at if a decision is getting challenged? And, you know, kind of, the flip side of that is, what can we be doing to issue good decisions?
Yeah. I think that can come in, I think that comes a little bit into, Jen's done this presentation a few times, of kind of like the purview of the board and the responsibility of the boards, and so I think it comes into that, because I think a lot of the lawsuits or legal challenges to planning board's decisions come down to process and documentation on the record. So I think we can, Jen, I think, has touched on that before, and we can definitely touch on that in SEACRA, because I think a lot of that comes up sometimes with regards to SEACRA review. So next month, when we're going through SEACRA in general. I'll talk to Jen and Christian about that. I think that would fall to you guys more than me.
Well, going in a slightly different direction in there, because what I'm really talking about is like, you know, a little more nuts and, not so much getting into the details of what should the SEACRA process look like, for example, but a little more nuts and bolts along the lines of what does judicial review actually look like? I mean, a majority of the time, that's going to be in Article seventy-eight proceeding. It could also be Section nineteen eighty-three proceeding, if someone's asserting a regulatory taking or deprocess claim.
And you're looking to see what they're going to be looking at in those cases to make their determination?
Yeah, like what the... I mean, this is something that's very familiar to me, because I actively litigate government claims, both foreign against the government, just not in the context of the city of Beacon, but it's occurring to me that it's basically kind of a foreign language for most of the people here.
I think he just volunteered to do the work.
I could easily do this.
That'd be awesome.
Yeah. No, I mean, the county hires me to defend these kinds of cases from time to time, so this is like directly out of my wheelhouse.
Yeah.
Cool.
Yeah, I think that, great idea.
I think it is a good idea.
Maybe collaborate with Jen a little bit.
Yeah. Well, just because, too, it's not necessarily, the people who are coming here, attorneys who are coming here to represent the board don't necessarily have a lot of experience doing litigation, per se. I'm not saying that's an across-the-board thing. I don't really know what your background is, but...
Yeah, no, I do the litigation for the land use.
Okay.
Usually on the other side, though. Challenging municipalities.
Great.
So we can do a mock little... A little mock trial going on.
You can't handle the trip. We've got to move on. These are all great ideas.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
So, yeah, welcome, everybody, to the June 2025 meeting of the City Beacon Planning Board. First item of business would be to accept May minutes into the record. I'll accept a motion to do so unless there are any recommendations for adds, changes. I'll accept the motion.
Motion.
Motion by David.
Seconded by Len.
Seconded by Len, all in favor?
Aye.
Abstained by Karen. Abstention. So, as far as the agenda goes, item number one, which was the continued public hearing and continued review of two ninety-one Main Street, has been adjourned to next month, been removed from the agenda. So that means we'll jump directly to item two, which is the continued public hearing for subdivision approval and site plan approval, and continued review of applications for subdivision approval and site plan approval, mixed-use commercial and residential, forty-five Beekman High Street and High Street, submitted by Beekman Art Center LLC and Bay Ridge Studios LLC. I don't know why I feel like I need to read the entire agenda item, but it feels good.
I very much appreciate it. It saves me some words. With that, instead of my normal introduction, I'll say, for those keeping track at home, it is the flower strawberry, sorry, the strawberry pink moon, full moon this evening, for our full moon calendar, because we always seem to get together on full moons. Again, for the record, Taylor Palmer with the law firm of Cuddy and Fader, on behalf of the applicant. Tonight, I am joined by our project architect, R.A. Segal, as well as our recently crippled civil engineer, Justin Dates of Colliers Engineering. So, you know, be gentle on Justin. As the chairman pointed out, we are here for our site plan and subdivision public hearing in connection with our application for two four-story mixed-use commercial buildings with multifamily to be located at forty-five Beekman and High Street. As you are aware, we provided a comprehensive summary on the project back in February, when the SEACRA public hearing was opened. So at this time, I'll just provide a brief overview of our latest supplemental submission to the board dated May twenty-eighth, and we're certainly pleased to answer any questions after that. As we detailed in that submission, we do submit, we will ask the board, spoiler, to consider closing the public hearing. Of course, we still have the zoning work process ahead of us next week. Unfortunately, the board's meeting in the alternative. But by a brief way of procedure, at the May thirteenth meeting, the board did issue its negative declaration in accordance with SEACRA, as well as an LWRP consistency determination for the project, and, of course, closed the SEACRA public hearing for the project. So tonight is just the site plan and subdivision discussion continued hearings. The board also formally referred to the ZBA, which we'll be at shortly. The latest submittal did include some minor updates to our lighting and landscaping programs, and as we detailed in our letter, we do have some updates to the rear elevation drawings to align with the renderings, which R.A. will present in just a minute. Justin R.A. also touched on the lighting plan. I know that was a big discussion we've had over the last few months, which was updated to reduce the height of the, and the number of certain fixtures that we proposed in the parking areas. And then we did add decorative fixtures along the front and street facade. I'm out learning my lighting lingo, cove and other lighting. All proposed pole-mounted fixtures have reduced to a height of fifteen feet. The lumen levels for both the pole-mounted fixtures and the bollard lightings was also reduced. And then a number of fixtures in each of the arcade bays and the building mounted fixtures adjacent to the parking areas have also been reduced. The lighting plan also includes an alteration of the proposed fixtures for a warm white or neutral white light to a warm white light, slightly yellow in color, that's for softer illumination, and then has a better ambiance for the project. More lower-scale bollard lighting has been included behind the High Street building to focus the lighting on the sidewalk areas. Additionally, concealed lighting is now proposed on the front facades, excuse me, along the facades of the Beekman and High Street buildings to highlight and enhance the building's architectural features and elements. The lighting proposed along the brick elements of the buildings minimizes any, is intended to minimize any potential impacts to residents in the building itself, which was highlighted by the board, as well as neighboring properties. So this provides additional presence at night, which is in alignment with the lighting we previously showed in those arcades. Lastly, but not leastly, as Justin will highlight more fully in his presentation, we did include some more mature plantings. The landscaping plan was also updated since our prior appearance for you. So first, I'll turn to Justin, then I'll, excuse me, I'll turn first to R.A., and then I'll let Justin come up.
Good evening. Yeah, so Taylor covered most of the changes there. We submitted some minor updates based on the comments we received at the last meeting. The arcade lighting plans, as Taylor mentioned, were, you know, coordinated between both buildings, and we reduced the number of fixtures in the arcades, just to soften that up a little bit. We also... We also coordinated the line drawings of the elevations with the model, so there was a little discrepancy between the two, but we updated the line drawings to actually go along with the model, which was the more recent version of it. So we're up to date on those. And we also got the first version of some nighttime renderings with the new lighting that we looked at. We're kind of grazing the brick. You can see on top of the brick sections, that light won't be as strong. It's not going to look like a fixture it's supposed to, you know, be grazing the brick like the rest of that lighting coming down there. And that, we're working on with the render, but that's the idea, that we're highlighting the brick sections, which lets us avoid, you know, getting light into the apartments. And it sort of creates a theme of highlighting just the brick. We also have up...
Sorry.
Yeah.
Is this in the packet?
What file is it?
These are, these are... They'll be submitted on the next one, but...
If you want to know what happened to Justin, it was because we tried to submit something to Mercedes when it was not due, and that's the result. So we're just trying to get these materials presented tonight, and then we'll put them in our, in our package for next month.
But, yeah, just wanted to highlight you on, you know, what we changed with the lighting.
So let me just make it clear. So there's additional information you're sharing with us right now that we haven't seen before, so you'll understand that our ability to respond won't be in the immediate.
Yeah, no, yeah, we understand that, and that'll be submitted for the next one officially, but, you know, we just wanted to go over what changes we've been working on.
Awesome.
So we have that night view, that's a view from the rear parking lot, just to give you an idea of what that looks like, with the landscaping, the lower lighting, you know, and just how you would see it.
So when we review, how accurate to your landscaping plan is this view, specifically where, you know, you're showing trees and types?
Yeah, that should be pretty accurate. I'm reviewing that with our landscape designer right now, but...
You took a quick look at that, didn't you, Justin?
Yeah, it's pretty accurate, yeah. So there's a lot of, you know, screening between the parking lot and the High Street properties. That's just another detail of that, you know, the highlighting of the brick, and like I said, that bright line at the top is not going to appear like that. It's basically, there's a concealed light fixture, and it's going to sort of graze the brick coming down.
Thank you.
And then, this, I just want to clarify, this is a view of the back of the building. It's not, you know, it's shown without screening, just so you can see the building design. It's not meant to be an exact representation of you from High Street or property on High Street, but, you know, we just wanted to have some kind of view of the back of the building, so you understood what was there.
And again, I see, I see an elevation, a rear elevation, of what appears to be the larger building in the material you've submitted. Is, I don't see it. I may have missed it, but is there also an elevation of the smaller building down Beekman?
Yeah.
Of the rear?
Yeah.
Sheet A one oh seven.
Yep. It's over here. It's the one at the bottom of the page.
So you have...
What's, what's number one, then?
The front.
Oh, I see, okay. Thank you. I should learn how to read architectural plans.
You can have one of those education sessions.
You can do work session on that.
I'll come in if you want. So with that, I'll end my little presentation, and Justin will come up. Thank you. Yep.
These advancements are great. My question for your follow-up materials, what's control on them? How are you controlling them? If you, now you've added the layers to all the facade, which is great, you brought the light down low, right? How do we differentiate between intensities of each of them in order to create a truly composed visual? And that comes through the control system. How is that control, what is that control system, and how is that control system programmed in a way to allow us, allow you to differentiate between those layers? There seems to be, I saw the engineering light survey, and it had a pretty high differential between high and low. I think it was a four-point-five to one max to min between there. It seems a little high, and we can solve that, right, simply by having a control system. So I'd be curious on your plans next time.
Okay, yeah, we can look into that. I mean, usually, we don't get into that level of detail with the controls on lighting, but I'm happy to look into it, so we make sure that it works.
I guess, you know, if we could just understand the intention to do so, even if you don't have the specifications for it, that'd be okay, but the intention behind it would be great.
Right. And we also did specify fixtures from one company, so we had that, you know, additional compatibility, so...
Yeah, so that was like Lithonia, so it's good.
Right, yes, and I assume we can find the control through them, or...
And there's regulation talking about adaptive controls, such as dimmers, timers, and motion sensors, and shut-off lighting should be used whenever appropriate, so I think it is appropriate for the planning board to ask those questions.
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean, we'll spec out what the intent and the goal is. We may not get into the equipment.
Totally. I think the one issue that you have in your specification, and Lithonia's a good company, it's an old company, and it's solid. You have brand names within side of those manufacturers as well. It kind of dives deeper. Now that you're in one company, are you in one brand of that company, right? And each of those fixtures dimmable? Because you might have a control system that could just turn it on and off, but if you have something kind of like ripping through the lumens, you might be able to dim it down. Anyway, it would be a good conversation for next time, just to start.
Yeah, we'll get that in there.
Thank you for that, it looks great.
Thank you.
Good evening, Justin Dates, Colliers Engineering and Design. I guess I'll stick with the lighting, since we were just talking about that, some of the site plan modifications that we, that we looked at. So we did take, all the previous light poles were at a height of twenty feet, right? So they were on the back of the north side of, really, of the parking area there. So we knocked all those down to fifteen feet.
Good.
With doing that, you know, you can't keep the same intensity and lower and expect to not have hot spots or high illumination levels throughout the series of the parking lot. So we did knock down the illumination level in each of those as well.
Justin, before you go too far, I mean, just bringing it to your attention, you've got some significant hot spots along the front of the building, like eleven, five, twelve...
Yeah, I think twelve was the highest. That was for...
Twelve, one.
Under one of the sconces? No, it's not the bollards, it's the sconces that are on the building. So I think we have an opportunity to, they have other, you know, illumination levels that we can put, use in those. So I did notice that twelve, you know, was the hot under one of those, or two or three. So we could definitely swap that out, just to get a little more congruity between the light levels there.
Okay.
Yep, not a problem.
A lot of these fixtures, when you start dropping them down, they, they give you a couple different sorts of beam options within side of them. We don't just have to do a circular shape. There are kind of oblong shapes or symmetrical shapes that do affect the lumen output, so you might be able to push light in a different direction before you start reducing the output and then struggling between the high and the low.
So we did, we did that, we did that in both scenarios. So we dropped the illumination level and the distributions.
Yep.
You see, we have three different pole types, and that's because they have three different types of distribution.
Great. Great.
So type 3, which is more oblong, which we used, I believe, along the access to Tompkins, right? Because that's a long linear area. We're trying to confine the lighting to the roadway. So we looked to use those there. Being that we dropped them down to 15 feet, we used a few more of like the type 4, which is a forward throw, all right? So we can get all the way across the parking lot. We don't have that height anymore, so we need to, you know, get it projected across the parking lot at the lower, lower height. And then the one that was on, or is on the corner behind the High Street building, that's got actually a directional, should be a left directional with a right cutoff. So it's completely cut off on the right-hand side of the fixture, and it casts the light to the left.
Good. That's the C fixture.
That is the C fixture, yes.
Great.
So we're, you know, we're looking at all those pieces to accommodate the light and get it focused down on, you know, the parking area or the walkways, whatever the case may be.
Awesome, thank you.
Justin, with regards to the lights on the entrance coming off of Tompkins Avenue, those are 12-foot-high poles.
Those are shorter poles, correct?
Yeah. Are we kind of concerned of a truck, refuse truck coming through, or anything else taking those heads off? I mean, you may want to look to-
I think you could maybe just get them a little more off the edge of the curb line.
Yeah, I was going to say, get the heads back to the curb line, because I think you're going to wind up replacing these.
Check that. Understood.
And the distribution comes from the backside of the fixture, too, so you should be okay if you tuck those in.
Yeah, and it's not overly, it doesn't overly extend from the face of the pole, if I recall, so-
Yeah, they're like shoebox.
They're not very long, yeah. So again, and then we did, we tried to use more bollards in a couple of the instances to light the sidewalks. So get that down four feet in height, focus the lighting more in that scale, right, on the walkway behind the High Street building. We did have a fixture mounted 15 feet on top of the center access, the rear there, to kind of cast over the sidewalk. We got rid of that, and we used several bollards to light that access point, as opposed to the building-mounted fixture. Then we took everything and we dropped, we had 3,000 Kelvin, which is a warm, white type of light. We dropped them all down to the 2,700 Kelvin, again, which is still a warm light, but has a, like a yellow tint to it. So again, I think more residential in nature, more appealing from that standpoint. Still has a high CRI, the color rendering index of 80, which is very good. And that's based on, you know, how you see colors at night from that light. So I think with the combination of all of these, you know, we've made some refinements to address some of the concerns that the board members have brought to us. And we'll look at the couple of things that were just mentioned here tonight, of course. For the landscaping, one of the changes that we made is, you know, we have a continuous buffer along the northern property line of the project site. And what we did is we looked back and we looked at what we were proposing, the heights of those at installation. And we thought that what we would do is we'd propose some larger species heights at installation, just to try to establish that buffer in more, you know, quickly fashion. So our eastern red cedars, Norway spruce, and the white pines, we went from six to eight to the eight to the 10, that being the minimum at the installation. And the arborvitae's also, they were at five to six, so we moved them up to the six to eight range as a more prominent height at the time of installation.
Installed height.
Installed height, correct.
Yeah, curious what their, I don't want to ask the same question you do, but at their mature height, what are those arborvitae's expected to be?
I mean, they easily could be 25 feet.
And the spread?
Okay. Those-
Which one?
They could, you know, those are easy, you know, eight to 10 feet, pretty easily. I think that one's a quick grower, so we do have more of those throughout, so that we can look to establish that screen quickly.
And how close are you planting them?
They are probably, actually, I got, I'm sorry. Six, six feet or so. I'd have to confirm that exact, but, so they're going to come together pretty quickly and establish that screen. That was our goal.
What's type P A?
P A, that is-
Norway spruce.
Oh, P A is the Norway spruce.
Norway spruce, okay. And those are even higher.
They can get much larger than that, yes. So with the space that we had available, you see, we were using some of the arborvitae's and the headside junipers as a smaller species to create that buffer, and having some accent plants, being the white pine and the Norways.
Do you have any concern about deer with the arborvitae?
Oh, no. Not this particular species. This is one that they typically stay away from, unless there's absolutely nothing to eat.
I've seen deer eat holly leaves in the middle of winter sometimes.
And along the Tompkins Ave exit, the row of planting that you have there, the Hetsey, how tall will those expect it to be?
Those could get up to, up to 20 feet. That would be their max, really.
And how much higher is the house that's closest to the High Street parking lot? How much higher in elevation is that to the planting area?
You know what, I don't have that elevation handy. I did, I just don't have it with me. I'd have to provide that to the board for accuracy.
Okay. Could you, could you let us know if the trees at their mature height that you have along the High Street side of the parking area, that abuts the retaining wall to that, to the first house on High Street? What kind of screening those trees will provide for the property owner to the buildings? And I think it would be helpful to know how long it's going to take for the trees to get to their mature height from the time that you plant them. And I think it would also be helpful to see in the rendering what it's going to look like at planting, and not 25 years in the future when they're mature.
Yeah, that's a good point, because if that house is high enough above mature height, then there's no screening. You're basically, house is up here, top of trees is here, you're looking over them, so-
You might want to mix up that planting to provide some greater height.
We could, I mean, that house does sit significantly higher than, you know, the current height of the project site itself.
We should be clear, when we talk about screening, what is actually being screened and from what, so-
Understood.
Yeah.
And we are raising that area, as I mentioned in one of the other meetings. So where that, those plantings are, where the parking is, that's, we are raising that grade. Remember, we were talking about like what's going on next to that wall and everything? So, you know, right now, if you were to go out and plant them, they'd be significantly, you know, lower than what we're looking to get them up at, again, to help the total overall height that we can get.
And I think that the sizes that you're putting in are, you know, I think they're really small. They're easily available in the nursery trade, you know, at 10 to 12, 12 to 14 feet high. I think starting something that would give some real screening would be helpful. Same, you know, like kind of across the board, the planting schedule has really small material. It's going to take forever for it to provide any type of screening for houses that sit higher in elevation than the parking area. So I think it would be helpful in the renderings to see kind of like a time lapse, like at planting, and then how long you expect it to take to provide the screening that you're expecting it to provide. And the planting along that exit to the road to the north, I think would be more visually interesting if it weren't just a row of columnar junipers. And in the area where you say that there's trees to be, you know, that are remaining, they're fairly spread out, and I think that there's plenty of room to beef up that planting in the, in the middle of the site with, you know, just additional material where you can, between the existing trees.
You're talking outside of, where we're saying that existing vegetation line to remain, that's essentially where our LOD is, right? So you're talking about pushing beyond that for plantings? Just, I'm just looking for clarification.
I think it would be helpful to have on your planting plan where the existing trees actually are, and then to see where there's room to add more to the west of where your existing vegetation to remain line is. There's a blank spot, you know, on the top side of the planting plan, which has been bubbled. It says existing vegetation to remain-
Correct.
-in that area, if you could actually indicate what is there.
We could bring those over from the tree preservation plan.
Yeah. And, and take a look to see if there's more room to add more large canopy trees.
We had done that before, so looking to expand that deeper into that existing area. Is that what I'm understanding?
Say that again, sorry.
You should look at the, we had, you had this comment previously, and we did look, we did add oaks, and we did add some larger, you know, canopy trees in there, but you're looking to push more of those further into, or further west, is that correct?
Yes, I feel like the west, you know, the west, the northwest corner is, you know, those large canopy trees are very farly spaced apart. So if there's room to add more, that would be helpful.
Okay, they're probably around 25 feet or so on center, roughly?
There are more than five parking spaces between them, one, two, three.
Justin, I think you need to bring in what's existing in that area.
Yeah, we'll do that.
Just looking at this without anything in that area, it looks, it looks like quite the spread between trees.
You know, again, I think also with the, sorry to interrupt, with the elevation change, like, you know, the houses in that corner are even higher. So it would be helpful to see what kind of screening they're actually going to provide for the building, you know, from the residents.
So I think with the cross-sections that we have, too, on the, or the elevations, right, of the site, we could revisit those.
Yeah.
I heard that, okay.
I'm just curious, the A R O G designation, it's the-
Red maple?
Red maple. October glory?
That's correct.
Oh, there it is, common name, sorry. Again, I got to learn how to read drawings. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just have a quick question, just as a refresher. I know we've discussed just as far as the overlay. There is a portion of the site that has HDLO designation on top of it. Would you be able to just point that out for us, just to refresh us?
Basically, in this, there used to be a- All right. Oh, yeah, do you want to just zoom in on it? And we'll get the corner. I mean, you can see the little hashing right up in the corner. Of the site? So as you approach High Street, there's a lot there that presumably at some time had some type of a residence or was incorporated, but there is nothing there. The most recent use, of course, was contractor, office, and storage, and I can't imagine we were trying to preserve that. But that is the corner where the HDLO designation is, so approximately right here.
Okay, I'm just curious, too, does any part of the new construction fall within that overlay?
There's a tiny portion, yeah, the parking area.
The parking area. Okay, thank you. All right, so we'll make our way around our consultants. We'll start with you, Mr. Russo.
So they still have some outstanding comments that they need to address, but we're waiting for DOT as far as the acquisition of the land. They submitted a lot consolidation plan to combine the lots. We found that acceptable, along with the descriptions that they submitted for the land to be dedicated to the city along the roads. They still need to get the variance for the parking along High Street, and they're going to be, going to ZBA June 17th to start that process. With regards to the sanitary sewer and the connection of the homes, they've done televising out there. They found out the other homes are tied to Tompkins, so they can actually redo their utilities on the site and reduce the amount of utilities on the site. They just need to provide for the sewer for House Number 7 out to Tompkins, because that is the only one that appears to connect to the sewer on the site itself right now. With regards to landscaping, we were also looking to get some of the trees pulled away from the back of that house on High Street that's right adjacent to the site, because it appears that they're right next to that wall. And I just want to make sure that there's no impact to that wall.
You're talking about right here?
No, actually-
Up here?
Right there.
Got it, okay.
And with regards to the storm order, the SWIP is acceptable at this time. They may have to make some minor modifications as they further development, further develop the plans. And then just, as we said before, the lighting in certain areas, it seems to have hot spots that they're going to work on.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Quinn?
Yeah, I think most of the comments have been either addressed by John or in the previous conversation, parking variance easement. Main comment was about elevations. At the May meeting, the board, we specifically discussed that we wanted to do a full group kind of ARB review of the rear elevations. So I think we saw some of those materials provided tonight visually, that we'll review for the, for that conversation. And then one item I added, just because of the conversation that was had at the last planning board meeting, was on comprehensive plan consistency review, specifically with regards to size and scale. So that's a new comment in there, just for the board's information, that the 2017 comprehensive plan update designates the project site as high-density residential within the land-use plan of the comprehensive plan, which recommends density of 16 to 50 units per acre. So at 32 units per acre on the site, the proposed development falls within that range as identified in the comprehensive plan. Plan also discusses two-to-four-story apartment buildings in the Lincoln District and supports form-based design that enhances the area between Main Street and the Metro North Station. Additionally, mixed-use development is encouraged near Route 9D, which what we're seeing here on the site, and Beakman Street intersection to create a more active and welcoming gateway. So accordingly, the proposed project, based on the language above, I believe, is consistent with the size, scale, and use goals of the comprehensive plan.
Thank you. All right. Board, any questions of the applicant or consultants before we go to the public, or other observations, comments?
Are we going to come back to the rear elevations after the public?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? All right, we'll go to the public. We are in open public hearing. Anyone who would like to share their thoughts with us, please do.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, as per your last comment about the comprehensive plan, I apologize ahead of time if this sounds pedantic or whatever. I was looking at that part of the comprehend, that comment from the comprehensive plan and thinking about how, what is a gateway to Beacon, and what does that mean? So these are sort of my thoughts on that. As per the comprehensive plan, it's also the first time I've ever had a written-down statement, so. As per the comprehensive plan, mixed-use development is encouraged near the intersection of Route 90 and Beakman Street to create a more active and welcoming gateway. If this project really is a gateway to Beacon, then this is a unique, once-in-a-lifetime opportunity opportunity to help establish in the minds and experiences of visitors and residents alike what that beacon is, not only in appearance, but more importantly, in character, to give physical form to the ideals we want our community to embody. So, for example, is Beacon a place where human contact is valued as an important part of daily life? If so, what does the design of this gateway project do to facilitate that? People like to watch other people, so incorporating elements like street furniture and awnings help create outdoor living areas and street-level windows to create a permeable membrane of porosity connecting inside and outside. It helps enliven the streetscape when pedestrians are close to the building fronts, so they can develop relationships with them, see what's in the store, who's there, what's happening. In the streetscape, are pedestrians and bicyclists given status equal to that of motor vehicles? Are the buildings inviting to passersby with easily identifiable entryways? The covered arcade could be more effective if the sidewalk weren't separated from it by the landscaping, which could also help shield pedestrians from having to walk next to the busy traffic on 9D or the cars speeding down Beakman. Why the gap between the two buildings? Would it be possible to attain the same density with three three-story buildings instead? This is getting back to, you know, the, the gateway concept, what do we want? Is nature recognized as an indispensable element of our urban landscape? If so, is it being integrated into this design? For example, is there a reason why there are no street trees along the Beakman side of building number two? Why put a boring stretch of lawn along the side of building number one facing 9D, knowing that it would probably require a lot of maintenance, rather than, for example, plant native species attracted to pollinators? Another question, is Beacon a place where the history of the community is recognized and respected? If so, why are these buildings so monolithic when the rest of the buildings on the block are historic, single-family houses? And there's a lot more questions like that we could all ask. Frankly, the current design looks like a drive-by, a nowhere. It's a fine building that would be fine, but just not in this location. It's not a gateway building, it's not a gateway concept building. There have been tweaks to lighting and landscaping, which are helpful, but no substantial design changes. Beacon deserves a better introduction.
Thank you, Jill.
Any questions?
Teresa Kraft. My concerns have not changed since the initial drawings. I still oppose the mass overbuild at the gateway to Beacon. A budding NHDL neighborhood on High Street, Victorian beauties on Mulcahy Avenue, and the remaining view sheds, it's out of character. Coming here to tonight's meeting, it took me more than 10 minutes to come up the hill from the corner of Ferry Street to make a right-hand turn into the municipal driveway off Beakman Street in bumper-to-bumper traffic. Tonight's workshop referenced in state guidelines, buildings in HDLO should not exceed 30 feet in height. The project drawing in tonight's packet show 48 feet to the top of the fourth floor, which is misleading. What is the overall height, including the mechanical structures? For accuracy, that is the mass we will be seeing. It was mentioned tonight that the comprehensive plan states the area should change to a high-density neighborhood, but we need to look at the recent builds in the area as a whole. It's already reached that high level of den, high-density. How much is too much? This is too much.
Anyone else?
First, I just want to say is, thank you for putting in the package Mary Ellen's letter to Shippa and all of our PDFs and PowerPoints and stuff like that. It was really condensed, and that's the first time I've actually seen in the package, you know, our concerns being brought in. So thank you for that. And if, and if you go through that section now, you can actually see everything that the residents on High Street have their concerns about. I also thank you for, this is the first time I've heard you bring up my house on 16 High Street and the, doing the shield and the property line and putting in better trees and, you know, the foliage, that's a pleasure, I'm happy about that too. I'm happy that they've reduced the, the light posts from 20 feet to 15 feet and reduced the lighting. So it seems as though we're actually getting some place and taking some concerns of, you know, the residents. Within the package, you'll see there is a dumpster still next to the property, I don't know if it's, if you go through the package, I brought up two other locations it could be moved to, please review it, who knows? And I also want to bring up something that's of concern, like, if you can blow this up a little bit, which you don't realize, that those three parking spots where they're going to have to get a, was it an easement because of the 40 feet? That section over there, it's a real concern, it's silt and, and all the water really comes down there, and that whole area is, is compromised. So I don't know if they're going to, you know, I haven't heard this, put in some type of additional retaining wall to block, because it's about 14 feet up, okay? And it's really coming down, if they're, they're putting those parking lots there, I mean, parking spots there and everything, there's really no room for a lot of trees there, and, you know, I'm really in work with them, if they want to, you know, put in some blocks to sew that up there, okay? Also, I appreciate where in the artish renditions, you saw what they presented was from the other building, there's never anything in the back of the 16 High Street building, and what you brought up, you know, to bring up a, a better rendition from that back area and actually looking at the trees and looking towards the house, which is something we've been asking for. But yet there still should be another art rendition of proper, of what the back of the building's going to look like, since 50% of the houses do look at that back of the building and what's it made of, you know, what's the material being used? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, it's Mary Ellen Case, 9 High Street. I sent in a bunch of stuff this morning, just because I felt like I needed to, I was up here, this is sort of above my, you know, understanding a lot of these processes, so I just had reiterated, and it's all in the packet, which I thank you, you know, just our conversation with Shippa, which we found very odd, I think I articulated it in the letter, they had mentioned to us that this new development shouldn't have any negative impact visually, audibly, audible, or atmospheric elements, which are out of character with historic properties and alters visual setting. So we had this conversation initially in April with Shippa, when the first letter was issued, I got this Mariana on the phone, we were sort of like spontaneously on the phone. So she's like, oh, let me take a look, and she looks and she said, oh, maybe you can send in, you know, rebuttal proof, you know, send it in to us. So I did mention at the April meeting, shortly that week, I got a letter from her, an email, saying, you know, these are, this is our criteria, you know, we've really looked at it, she was sort of discouraging me at that point to send in more information. Nonetheless, we spent a lot of time, everybody on High Street, and we put together various documents, we took pictures of the perspective, looking at it from this building or, you know, the city hall, and it was clear in our minds that 50% of High Street look at it. So when they issued another letter, and I know Taylor, that they issued that letter, because, you know, you jumped up and said it, we've seen it, we were surprised, so they agreed to, on the day of the May 13th planning board meeting, to have, have a Zoom with us. And it was just a sort of, it just, it just seemed odd to me, the entire conversation, it was just that they felt there was no visual, audible, or atmospheric impact, because we're on a hill, I think I mentioned it's a slope, I mentioned it last time, and therefore, none of the houses on High Street were going to really be affected. And we suggested that's not the case, you know, you're sitting in an office up in Albany, can you come down here? And they said that that's just not what they do, so nonetheless, I just wanted to get that on the record. Additionally, what I sent in was we had a woman who's been a surveyor, and a lot of this could have been addressed already, again, I didn't realize that it would be put in here, I didn't think I was going to present it, but there's a number of, sort of a synopsis, if you will, of these points, of which there's about 20 points, some of them I think have been addressed already, I could go through them, I don't, I don't know if that's appropriate or not, but...
Did you submit them?
Yes.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
So I can just go through them, okay. So essentially, what does the proposed development do to the historic value of High Street? How does this rendering compare with historical homes adjacent to this proposed development? These buildings lack resonance with the city's historical character, with High Street being one of the only streets in Beacon being considered for the National Registry of Historic Places. According to the surveyor, the scale of the drawings are off, because if the scale was proportional, it would match at the house corner and building corner, but the property line is not where it is supposed to be, suggesting that the image is not equally scaled. Is the horizontal scale equal to the vertical scale on the drawing? It appears skewed to give a more positive representation of the situation. How many existing older trees shielding the view will be removed while repairing the retaining wall between properties? Building setbacks along High Street should match the requirements for High Street, since the proposed High Street building sits on High Street, which is zoned R1-7.5, or 15 feet to blend in with historic district within 20 to 30 feet of the proposed building. Does the slope on High Street prevent you from turning the building closest to High Street to be parallel to High Street, so you could accommodate the same setback? Why is the property line in a different place? There's a retaining wall in this area, it's not a gradual grade. What is the elevation of the building's backyard area? What is the elevation of the first floor at 16 High Street, as this development will be 16 high side and backyards? If the elevation at the sidewalk at the corner of High Street and Beakman Street is 92.83, then why is the ground floor elevation 100? The top of the curb is currently 99.4 on the east end of High Street building, why are the developers allowed to begin at whatever elevation they want to in order to get the maximum of their 48 feet, which actually translates into more like 57 feet? Why is the mechanical equipment on top of the High Street building allowed to exceed the 48-foot limit? It is the ugliest, noisiest part of any building. Use of explosives, what kind of damage will that do to the older homes on High Street that are sitting on a slope and within 30 to 60 feet of the building, of which there's at least five, I think? Why are 95 trees being removed? Some of the trees are on land the developer doesn't own, but is owned by the New York State DOT. Will the drive coming out of, on Tompkins Street cause ingress and egress problems? And how will the lighting plan affect the residents of High Street? And how will it distract from the significance of the High Street historic district, as the plan doesn't shield them at all and the houses will, will look down on the building in full view? We went up to the top of High Street, and you can see it from the top, likely that's going to be seen, you know, it definitely is a big, big slope up. So anyway, I think that's, then there's all these different charts, and, but all those points were made on all these different images that are also attached, so those were like the 20 points or so. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Did you have something you wanted to address? Lynn?
Yeah, I would like for us to take a look at the, the rear elevation, since we haven't formally, we talked about before that, that at the time that we brought the process from the ARB subcommittee back to the full board, we hadn't yet seen the rear elevations of the building. And I'm wondering, you know, I think, looking at the, the rendering, I understand that the renderings are not perhaps perfectly calibrated, the elevation drawings, but just making some impressions for me, there's, there's a lot of things that are different about the rear elevation, that, for instance, those two brick, you know, the brick bays are primarily those two stair towers. I'm looking at...
Are you asking me? I don't know, I don't...
Okay.
Yeah.
They look like kind of cooling fins, they're, they're sort of jutting out the back of the building, they penetrate about halfway through the cross-section of it. Other than those two stair towers, all of the window bays are the, the metal trim, they seem to, they kind of jut out from the face of the building in the, in the rendering a way that they don't do on the Beakman Street side of the building. You don't have the same setback on the fourth floor, so it's just in the same plane as the, as the other floors of the, of the rear elevation, so it seems kind of monolithic to me. The back of the building seems very angular, and I'm wondering what we could do to soften it up and make it more in line with, with some of the pleasing impacts of the front of the building. And the front of the building benefits from the street plantings, the setback, the, the alternating, you know, brick bays with the metal window trim. I'm wondering if we could do something with the, possibly with the mullions on the fourth floor to soften it up, or to, to add some plantings, you know, to green up the base of the fourth floor, to kind of soften that, that rear facade, understanding that people are going to be pot, likely seeing it from their homes on High Street. I would like in an ideal world to try to improve the rear elevation and, and it's just darker, and it's, I understand why, you know, between the parking lots and the lawns, without the benefit of plantings around the base of the building, but, but overall the design seems very angular and, and monolithic to me. So that's my initial take, I don't know, Kevin, if you have...
Where, where are we finding?
I'm just looking at this.
No, where, where, where?
I had to go back to, I had to go back to April.
Can I look at that a little closer?
Yeah. So like I said, these guys are, like I said, they almost look like cooling fins, they kind of shut up, they...
Yeah, it's just really prominent, like massing, right? The massing is completely different in the rear than it is in the front, and that's just an effect of sort of extruding elements that have to be there, like the stairs, and not really thinking about the composition of the thing, what, that, as something, the way that buildings used to be built, right? All four facades would have, would have been composed to be looked at, right? Instead of having the rear sort of being, which a lot of the buildings are now, and unfortunately, Ari has a unfortunate habit of doing this, is putting facades on that are worked over until they get approved, and then the sides and, and the rears sometimes are extruded with cheap materials, right? This happened more in the past than it does now, but, and this, it isn't that way right now, I mean, it's, it's an improvement, but it isn't the same as composing the rear, right? That's what you're, that's, that's what you're responding to, is the fact that there's a street facade, there's a public face, right? You can have a public face different than the, a courtyard or a face that is basically facing your neighbors, right? This is, this is the sort of presentation, this is what you're telling people that you're living next to, that you care about them, and you've thought about the experience that they're going to have looking at your building for most of the time that they're owning their house, which will, for some of these people, it's going to be the rest of their lives. And you can tell, that's why they're so passionate about this.
So there might be, there might, you know, I'd like to see, I'd like to see them take a look at doing some things, like I think the building on the corner of Main and Shank, the greenery starting to come in on the, on the upper floor, which is, it's kind of softens up, and I wonder if something could be done like that to kind of soften the base of the fourth floor, given that there's very little or, or no setback on the back, I'm wondering if something can be done also differently with those stair towers, you know, so that they don't look like chimneys or...
Right, or stair towers in a housing project, you know?
Yeah, it looks kind of...
Because the rendering's always going to be different than what gets built. I mean, I, I have empathy, because every time the leaves fall in front of my house, there's a building that I have to look at that is not quite the same as the renderings that were presented.
So we've looked, we've looked at the fourth floor from the front, and it's, the mullions or the, you know, the fenestrations, the same, it's a very rectilinear, but maybe something could be done a little bit differently with that grid to soften up the fourth floor when you don't have, you know, overall, you have the benefit of the setback on the front, but you don't have it on the back. And then, and the way the, the third story, or second and third story bays are really punched out from the back, and so, and like I said, correct me if there, there may be things in the rendering that are not well-represented compared to the elevation drawings, but it's easier, I think, for me to just kind of try to touch on some of these things. Yeah. Yes.
That's the most latest, right?
Yeah.
Because there's some differences here to what I'm seeing here. Is that right? Specifically, the, the ground floor, the brick treatment on the ground floor, at least in this view, what I'm seeing on the elevations, those are blank brick walls without punched What I'm seeing on the elevations, those are blank brick walls without punched windows. So help me out here. I just want to first make sure that we kind of encapsulate what Len and Kevin sort of were discussing. I don't want to then repeat. So I'm not exactly sure if you could maybe sort of put in more succinct terms what you're kind of responding to and hoping to, oh, so, I'm sorry. Well, wait, there's too many iterations. I guess that's the thing that I'm addressing right now. But again, I want to get back to Len and Kevin, just in terms of how you want to kind of encapsulate what you just said for the benefit of the applicant so that they can sort of start thinking about a response.
Yeah, the rear facade is compared to the front, I think, very angular, very slab-sided because we don't have a setback on the fourth floor. The way the stair towers penetrate the building adds to that and project up from it, but you know, kind of just are. And so I'm asking, what can we do to soften those features or, you know, get some differentiation between the floors? Whether it is looking at different fenestration or greening up, you know, adding plantings to the building itself. Maybe looking at the way these second and third floor bays are projecting out from the brick in a very, it's kind of brutalist looking from the back. So I'm asking, what can we do, understanding what's in the region, the historic homes and the view that folks are going to have? What can, you know, what can we do to soften this up? And I kind of just enumerated all the features on the front side that to me make the building more friendly to the street. There's the street plantings, there's the arcade, there's a setback on the fourth floor. There's more alternating bays of, you know, first through third story brick. All those things work in favor of the front facade. We don't have the benefit of any of them on the rear facade and also you've got, you know, you've got the parking lots and lawns. So the, so as much as the building is stark, the landscaping around it, and I'm focusing more on the Beakman building. I think the High Street building gets the benefit of those kind of dormer-like structures. There's a, I think, a pleasing repetition, but things are broken up more compared to that really plainer feel of the other building. It's darker. Is that?
Yeah, it's in line with what I was going to sort of mention in terms of what I'm responding to relative to just starting from the ground floor up in the back.
Yeah.
Right, I understand that the, almost the entirety of the first floor is parking, right?
Yeah.
So then, starting with the second story, there's fenestration, which is somewhat represented here. But my sense is that the elevation, which I'm now registered, I know what it is, is a little different from what you're showing here. Meaning, there's this single-story height before you see window of blank brick across basically the entire expanse of the building. So that's number one. And I was looking at that against the landscape plan. There's absolutely no landscaping. There's just grass up to that brick expanse. So again, this doesn't necessarily represent what I'm seeing here in the elevation in the, to the extent that Len is describing this starkness, especially as it relates to that first story of basically pure brick for the entire run. Some, it's got to be 100-plus feet. That's what I'm responding to very strongly here. So we got to look at that because it, not just how, you know, the neighbors might view it, but just the experience of the residents at that level in the back. I know it's the back of the building, but still.
Yeah. Yeah, no, we can certainly look at landscaping down, you know, by that lower wall, which is the wall of the garage.
Yeah, it may, it may take a little bit more than landscaping.
Yeah.
It's basically what I'm saying is it's a blank brick wall.
Right.
A single-story high, well above your head height.
It's not a single-story high the whole way across because of the way the grade changes.
Well, that's what your elevation shows. So that's what I'm responding to. It goes, sure, it goes up as you go toward North Avenue. But that's just a small portion of the site at that end. Again, what the elevation is showing me is that you've got, I don't know, what are these bay widths, 30 feet? You've got almost 160 feet of blank brick wall.
Right. Yeah.
Yes?
Yeah.
Yes. Okay. So that's number one. Number two, the stair towers, I agree. I think it's okay if a stair tower is a stair tower because that's an element that needs to be rated, it needs to be, you know, a solid rated element. Although it has windows in it. And I won't get into that, but just the way that the windows are handled on that stair tower is just so out of character to everything else on the building. They're a little odd with those sort of double windows. It just looks weird. You know, it's out of keeping, out of context. And it sort of adds to the sort of mishmash quality of the rear facade. Those are the two elements that I'm responding to most viscerally. And then where you have the ganged windows, they appear here on the second story. And there's some gang windows as they go up on the north side. Sorry, the west side of the building. They look like they're paired, they're two windows, they look like they're paired. It's hard to determine both from the rendering and from the elevations, how those are being treated, just in terms of how they're set in. I don't know, is it a brick pillar between the two of them? It's just not clear. So if we could, if we could generate more clarity around what those are going to look like. Because that's, again, I'm responding to this entire elevation at this level. And that's probably the area that's kind of jumping out to you as this sort of brutalist quality that's just deadly, right?
Yeah, I mean, also we need to adjust where the ground plane is on that line drawing. That would sort of simplify version of it.
It's different.
Well, I can only respond to what I'm looking at.
Right.
And again, history teaches us that renderings are built and designed to wow. And sometimes what you're seeing in rendering is not the reality of what actually gets built.
Yeah, no, I'll adjust that ground plane on the elevation because the rendering is accurate in this case.
Yeah, okay. So then, yeah, help us out so that we can respond to something a little more accurate.
Also, I just want to say that, you know, the front elevation has those requirements, you know, for the the design requirements. And the rear elevation doesn't.
I don't buy it. I don't buy it.
But I'm not done.
Even if it doesn't have a design requirement, it doesn't mean you can't design well. So please don't give me that argument.
No, that's not the argument. What I'm saying is that we did essentially the same detailing on the rear, except for the, you know, the amount of brick. And, you know, it could have been much more simplified, but we, you know, we pulled over that same kind of detailing.
I understand. You want to make sure that the language is cohesive. It's just, it's not, it's not appearing that way. So forgive me for jumping on you.
No, I understand, but it's the same detail. And if you look at the front and the back, it's, I pulled the exact same detail.
I'll put it this way. Yes, I can see that you've brought design elements around to the back of the building.
Yeah.
The attention to composition there is different. That's what I'm responding to.
And detail. I'm glad you brought up the details.
Yeah, it's the same detail. We could look at adding more brick to it.
On the front side.
But it's a different standard and it is the same level of detail.
I hear what you're saying, so, but also understand what we're responding to.
Yeah.
Right? There's, as far as the proportions, the scale, the experience of the user, there's a difference. You can agree, so the language is similar. You're telling us that the detailing is going to be similar. I'm not picking that up necessarily from the material. But the way that they're distributed, handled, and basically arranged is different. And that's what we're responding to.
Yeah, I mean, I think the big difference is the setback on the fourth floor, which is not required on this side. And the, you know, the dividing it up into brick and glass. I want to be clear that I'm not asking for a setback. I'm just saying, like, could something be done, maybe some plantings to. Yeah. You know what I'm talking about? When I was looking at the back of Shank the other day. Yeah. It's starting to look, that's starting to look very pleasing, those plantings. We did look at that and I think that is an option. I mean, there was also the concern, you know, that you've brought up, Wes. Who's going to water this and? Yeah, who's going to water it? Who's going to maintain it? There's another thing that, you know, maybe, there's, on the other, on these buildings, on the Beakman Street and High Street building, on the facades that face Beakman, there was a lot of attention put into a repeating element of a tower with different permutations. You have the clock tower, you have the one tower that has kind of a prism on top of it. And there was some thought put into a repeating element, but with variation, which I think is really neat. Maybe something can be done with the staircase towers at the cornice with some bracketing or maybe some details that relieve some of the kind of starkness of it and give, you know, something, something that's appropriate with the overall design, but maybe as a nod to some of the richness of detail on the surrounding houses, that when you looked at it, if you see it from above, it would just give the eye something to pick out, you know, on those high points that would maybe even distract attention away from equipment enclosures and other things by just, you know, I don't know. I'm not, I don't want to tell you how, what, but just trying to give some thoughts. No, I understand the idea there, but I just want to say, you know, we did bring similar elements of the design back in the exact same detailing, but it's masked differently. You know what jumps out to me as being different? Like I can see, like, I agree with what you're saying about it's the wall that is adjacent to 9D, but the west side of it. Those, the window bays there on the second and third floor, the way they're, they seem to be, the metal feature is kind of projecting out of the brick surround, that's different from the, from the front. They're on either side of the larger, or the broader stair tower. And they're, you know, they're, they're kind of jutting out of the brick, with the surrounding brick wall in a way that doesn't happen on the other sides of the building.
They're cramped. If you give both of these towers a little space on either side, right? You can articulate that those will be, you can have the, you know, the theme and the variation of the two stairs. They're similar, but variations, right? And one of them is in sort of a black or a more plain background and the other one has these bay windows or whatever, kind of a little bit too close. Do you see what I'm saying? I think that's what you're responding to is it's cluttered.
Yeah, we can look.
That's a cluttered composition. There's too much going on, right? And the other thing that John, I think, was just the fact that what you're seeing from a distance is that there's a large brick base, right? With some articulation, it's not reading in the elevations, it's not reading in the renderings and that the. Oh, wait. No, actually, there is, there's articulation. There is, okay. And is that accurate? Is the rendering accurate as far as the grade?
Yeah.
We're just. That's the accurate, that's how it's going to be graded?
We're looking at, we're looking at this as a, just as a prompt for these comments.
Yeah, and that should be in the package. It's really awkward and it's hard to memorialize our comments accurately to help you out.
I understand that. Part of the issue is that we have, it's the timing between the meeting and the due date of the next one and the renderer can't always hit it. But I wanted to share it with you, but it'll be submitted with the next one. We don't have the third and fourth floor plans either, do we? And I didn't see them, because when I went through the drawing this month, I see the fourth floor for the High Street building. I believe, yeah, there was no changes on the third and fourth floors. So we didn't submit that drawing, but. So I got it. Thanks. Yeah. Okay.
Anything else, Kevin?
Yeah, I would have to reiterate my concern with how the brick is detailed around the windows. I guess it's the second floor. It's much flatter and they feel like they're just punched out of the brick in this facade as opposed to the detailing that is on the Beakman side. And, you know, I understand that there's preferential treatment to the street side. But given the sensitive nature of this side of the building and its neighbors, maybe we can, you know, do, it's just, it feels very flat and unarticulated. And there's really nice detailing of the brick on the opposite side. So maybe you could bring a little bit more, particularly around like the lintel and some, you know, shadow lines to help with particularly the second floor punched in windows.
I just want to, you mean those first paired windows?
Particularly the northwest corner of the build, like that, you know, stair. The windows adjacent to the northern stair tower feel particularly flat.
The ones that John described as the ganged pairs of windows, is that?
I don't know.
Yeah. Yeah, just want to make sure I'm looking at the right thing.
This, this portion of the facade.
Okay.
You know, in the rendering, I see that there is some detailing and variation in the brick of the the more southern, I don't know.
Can I, oh, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Yeah, and landscaping in that section will help as well. That's it.
Thank you. What else, Kevin?
Oh, I just had one other comment that I noticed was the window spacing on that first floor is it's awkward because it's too, they're too close to the pillars. And the space, that spacing there, if it was more sensitively done, would be more comfortable looking. You see what I'm talking about? The windows themselves look like they're spaced too far apart in each bay, right?
The paired, yeah.
Yes. You can either pair them even more, or, you know, there's a lot of compositional things you could do to make it stronger. But that is a particular way that's not strong, you know, having it spaced the way it is.
Yeah, no, I can look at that. They're aligned with those bays above, but I also see the point there.
Sometimes it's better to break those things, you know, to change up the rhythm, you know? As long as it's still in the same, you know, it's like music, you know? You can change things and it gets more interesting.
Okay, thank you. So I heard your earlier request to potentially close the public hearing. I know you guys are headed up to ZBA.
Yep.
Thinking is we want to keep public hearing open just in case there's anything significant coming out of ZBA that affects your application.
Right, and I think important tonight, thank you for all the comments, certainly feedback from the public. I think to dial it back to where we are, we moved this project very, very far to get to this point where we're talking about specifics on the landscaping, the heights of the trees, the lumens of the lights, the color of the lighting, dumpster locations and things like that. So I think to really try and channel this back, we hear you, and as we've done, we'll work it into the design. You know, REA spent a lot of time getting it there. It is a gateway, we understand that, but it's gateway in two ways. From the train station and coming from the bridge. There's a lot more before you get to this building that's a gateway to the Beacon that we know. So highlighting where we are in the process and in the building design, it's only fair to indicate what we're talking about, which is very specific items regarding the application, and we know the focus on the rear. So we are treating that, that submission, of course, you didn't have the full benefit before tonight's meeting, as Ari mentioned, for timing. And obviously you saw what happened to Justin when he tried to get it to Mercedes between the deadline and now. So we'll get you there and we'll get those materials and continue the hearing and of course, report back to you about the zoning board.
I have one more question about the neighbor's comment about the location of the garbage. Is there something that you can do to look at that and respond to his concern?
Of course. Thanks.
I just wanted, one, I thought there was really good comments during the public comment, especially from Jill, about looking at streetscape, pedestrian, bike, pedestrian. And this has been a very long process, so it's almost like compiling all our letters from the past year and a half might be. Because I know, I just wanted to put on the record, the planning board did have a lot of conversations around street trees, around potential for pedestrian and bike amenities and things like that, and that was a lot of conversation. There was issues with utilities and things like that. So I just didn't want to note it, I didn't want it to go that that wasn't discussed. There was a lot of discussion around that at the beginning. Those were really good comments, so.
Good point. Yes, this has been a year and a half for you.
Yeah.
So thank you.
Thank you.
I will say this though. Yes, you encounter other environments before you get to this site on your way into Beacon. Yes, you encounter other environments before you get to this site on your way into Beacon.
True.
That doesn't mean we want to hold this site to a lesser standard, and that the site as a prominent site within Beacon, as one begins their experience in Beacon, and then also as we live here and have to experience Beacon, is super important.
Absolutely.
So, I understand what you're trying to do by saying what you just said, but it really irritates me.
I was just trying to get you irritated.
You did a good job, because I don't want any, any...
I had to go back to meeting number one, had to get that fire back in.
Any thought whatsoever that somehow we should consider this a lesser...
It's in this district that they created called the linkage district. It links a lot of things, and I think we're doing that, and we're going to keep working on that. Now we're going to link the back to the front and back around.
Thank you. Hey, a whole year and a half. Okay, we're going to move to the next agenda item, which is the continued review of applications of site plan approval and special use permit, hotel and restaurant, 1064 Walcott Avenue, submitted by J. Mark M. N. G. LLC. Thank you, good evening.
Next time we'll come up with an easier LLC name, but for now, Taylor Palmer with Cuddy and Fader, on behalf of the applicant, I'll just refer to them that way. Tonight I am joined by the project architect, REA Segal, as well as Dan Kohler from Hudson Land Design. We are also joined by the applicants, Mark DiFabio and Julie DiFabio. As you mentioned, Mr. Chairman, we are before you tonight in connection with the application review for site plan and special use permit approvals, proposing to adapt or reuse two of the existing buildings on the property for proposed hotel and guest amenity spaces, as well as an accessory restaurant. Following our discussions at the February 11th, and then we took a month off, and then the April 8th meeting, the applicant took additional time to consider your comments in relation to the application, and it's worth those from your consultants, and we did thoughtfully modify the project to refine its scale and the massing, and then provide more definition about the proposed architectural features, further emphasizing the historic character of the historic building on the northern portion of the property. So REA's going to walk through those design changes in just a minute. Our May 28 supplemental submission was focused entirely on the visual design of this building and the architectural design, really intend on getting feedback from the board about that before fully engineering the site, because again, we really want to try and get this to a position where we can sort of fully envelop or develop those, that building program. So once we've aligned on that design concept, then we'll prepare updated engineering and traffic materials that would go for supplemental submission for the project. So just to steal some of REA's talking points, as I typically do, before we get through, as we detailed in our May 28 supplemental submission, we did redesign the project to emphasize the existing building on the property, and then to enhance the conformity with the HDLO requirements, which we alluded to in our submission materials. So for example, the addition that links the two, that had linked the two existing buildings on the property now includes two separate detached buildings as they exist today. So we've separated the buildings and broken up that massing. So the historic building on the northern portion of the property will be maintained as a separate structure in its existing position on top of the hill there, and then the addition will be constructed to the existing building on the southern portion. The connection point between the addition and the southern building will be stepped back from the facade of that building with the contrasting color and connection to make it sort of appear as three separate but related structures. And the change was aimed at reducing the massing overall of the hotel, as well as to ensure the existing historic structure remains more prominent than the proposed additions, and to avoid any undue alteration or enlargement of the historic structure. Other design characters include porches on the second floor of the addition at certain guest rooms, which provide more definition to the facade of the building, and echoes those porch designs of the two existing buildings. Also, gable ends have been added to the roof design at the entrance, bays to complement the design features of those existing buildings. So without further ado, while REA speak to sort of this progression and the separation, I guess maintenance of the separation where we previously had them connected as one.
So, yeah, so, you know, we've been through a couple iterations of this, and we kind of went back to something that Karen said earlier on about three separate structures. So we definitely knew we were going to separate out the historic north building and disconnect that from the addition. There were, it's not developed here, but there'd be sort of a landscape garden area between there, some kind of function that's related to the hotel, but definitely outside and disconnected from the historic building. And then the way the addition connects to the southern building, it only, we carved out the front part of that and it only connects at the back. So the idea with this one is to, you know, make it as much like three separate masses as possible. We didn't totally separate the south building from the addition, because I think that coming in from behind idea, you know, works visually, and I don't know if it would be much improved by just disconnecting it. It also helps just with the building, you know, you can share stairs and elevators and things like that, so for, you know, we're keeping that connected. We are doing some work on the north building because it's had some additions over time, so we're trying to sort of recalibrate that, so it's more fitting with the historic nature of the existing building, but, you know, but that footprint on all the floors is essentially the same as it is now, it's just we're trying to finish off what, you know, was never really finished over there. You know, we also had a couple of discussions about how those bays would be designed. There were some back and forth about going, you know, with like a shed roof, a gable roof, so we eventually went back to that gable roof. And I know, John, you were saying that you thought that that would actually look better than those shed, you know, repetitions, so we, you know, so we kind of went back to that But, yeah, we didn't get into a lot of engineering here.
Yeah.
We do have just another version of this, just which you did not get, again.
Yeah. If David were here, he'd be yelling at you right now.
I know.
Remember those days?
Yes, but this is more for impressions and so we can get some feedback, but if...
So you're going to back, what you're saying is you got a back pocket?
Yeah. Essentially, we got, instead of that open porch on that north corner, it's more of another turret idea, and then removing it from the middle, so there's sort of an asymmetrical symmetry on the addition facade. I think there's some benefit of that. You get another porch in between, you know, the center entry area on that second floor there. The windows are missing below that second porch, but, you know, but it's sort of a different take on it.
Yeah, well, look, overall, I'd say this is much better, right? And I appreciate the thinking around separating the buildings. I also appreciate the visual sort of depth, I don't want to call it a trick, but that's achieved with how you're connecting the new building to the existing southern building, the change of materials and the depth, and, yeah, I think...
It's a trick.
What's that? It's a trick?
Yeah.
The existing northern building, I can tell that from the existing to what you're proposing, there's an extension to the south, right?
Yeah, there's an adjustment to the roof.
Yep.
That extension to the south happened already, but, you know, we're trying to make it work with...
Oh, the lower extension to the south, you're adding on top of it.
With that, with that, that's what I'm referring to.
Right, yeah, yeah, so we're trying to get that to, you know, just...
So my main question here is, what you're representing just in terms of the volume, the mass of foundation, does that exist, you know, all of that stone in the existing building?
Right now, there's a combination of, part of it's landscaping, but we're lowering that to make the parking work.
Okay, because I don't remember it when dropping my kids off 20 years ago, it being that steep.
No, it's, yeah, and then part of it is the fact that it's being changed from brick to stone.
So you are, and you're, so you're adding that stone, you're changing your grading?
Yeah.
You're adding the stone, and then you're taking the stone all the way around the existing building?
Wherever, wherever the brick is now, we would replace that with stone.
So you've got, right now, the columns are on brick pillars and it's open between them, so you're saying you're going to fill that all in with stone, by what you're representing here?
Yeah.
Interesting. And then my initial response to this version, if you go to the one where you have the new southern turret, that's a much more prominent element, right? I think, no, well, I'll go back, I'll go back to that in a sec, but...
Okay.
Go to the main one, and then there's a view, this one, there's a view that I'm looking, yeah, that'll work. The southern turret, it's super prominent in relationship to the scale of the, sort of, the mass of the entry cluster. So I think, and it makes the entry cluster look diminutive in comparison, if you know what I mean, and it almost feels like that, and I'm not saying, you know, make the entry cluster bigger...
Right.
But think about the scale of that, because it almost feels like that should be more prominent, and so to that end, the second version that you just showed with the, I like, I like elements of both, but with the turret on the north side of the new building?
Yeah.
The second, that one?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's something about that that starts to help that kind of massing a little better.
Right, but, but not so much on the, you know, the other thing was that the other side kind of acted like a knuckle in the plan.
Yeah, yeah, and again, I like that, I like that quality of it, it's just it's scaled in relationship to the entry thing.
Yeah.
It just seems a little awkward, and then, and then I'm sure it'll get developed, but the entry thing just seems a little, or at least the main entry point, it seems a little bit of an afterthought.
Yeah, no, that'll get worked out.
Yeah, so, okay.
Yeah, just, so it's overall on the same page, that the idea was to, you know, sort of discuss the impression of this approach.
Yeah, no, just I think overall, my general impression is that this is a lot better. This is a bigger, this is a big improvement over what we were looking at before.
But it needs some adjustments.
Well, we'll, we'll spend the next year and a half doing that with you. So, but a great, I'd say a great start.
Can I, can I look at this different rendering?
Yeah.
You want me to put something else up there? Oh, you want my? Oh, yeah, of this version? Uh, yeah, so just, so you get the overall.
Mike?
If you go back there, this, this connection, right?
And the mic's not a pointer, it's talking to it.
I have a laser with me.
There is a laser attachment there.
That ridge line is, it's the same ridge line of the...
It's a little bit lower.
Connection, a little bit, you're looking up, you're looking way up at it.
Yeah, well, I mean, that was another thing that we took the notes on, is everything new is a little bit lower than everything existing.
I just wanted to, you know, because I didn't have the...
Wow.
And will this be distributed in development? Or is this just for RIS?
I mean, once we have this conversation, we're going to kind of decide which way to go with it.
So what you're showing up there no longer has the three, yeah, okay, so there's now a turret on the north end.
On this version, yeah, and the other version just had an open...
Right, there were two, there was a gable on either side of the entrance, entry tower.
Right.
I, one, two persnickety things, one is, I looked at that and just, I was like, if that's my place, how do I get in between those three towers to paint them? Who fits in there? How do you get in there?
There's a machine for that.
That's a real problem.
And then, the only other real brief thing I have is that the dormers on the, so on the northern, the existing historic home, where there's been a second story and a mansard roof added to it, the dormers seem really small compared to the windows on the turret. And if you look at mansard roof Victorians, there's a lot of really, really cool historic dormer treatments out there on mansard roof. I think if you went a little bigger and grander on those dormers, so that they, window size started to come closer to the windows on the turret of the historic home, it would make those pop, and it would make more sense visually to me in the vernacular.
You mean height-wise or both?
Height, yeah, I mean, no, so the...
Because the width is pretty much the same window.
It's the height of it.
Yeah.
They're shorter, they're like half, they're like two-thirds of the size of the windows, the height of the windows in the turret.
Right.
Right, and so...
No, I, yeah, I understand. I don't think I would go the, like, the full turret window height, but I understand maybe popping that up, yeah.
And it doesn't have to be the window entirely, but like I said, if you, if you look at, at some of the, there's some, you know, there's some cool mansard dormer treatments like with kind of curved eyebrows and stuff that would give them a little more prominence, even if the glass wasn't all of it, they just seem too small. It seems like, from the homes I've seen, that they ought to, they ought to be closer in mass to the turret windows, whether it's all glass or other elements, but just, they seem too small.
Yeah, that makes sense.
I also appreciate the evolution and the direction, the renderings that we received, I feel like the gables next to the entry of this southern building, it feels a little too congested, feels really, yeah, it just feels really tight. And so I think I like the...
Sorry, are you saying the same thing about that turret up there?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I got it.
But more just like the spatial flow and the scale. And, and then the other thing that really kind of sticks out at me is the experience of getting to the historic building. I think you might want to rethink your, like, rather than just have a straight, like, endless row of stairs to navigate, you might want to pull that through the landscape and have it be more of an experiential approach, and maybe even come on the other side of the turret as the entrance, but that's just deadly.
Yeah, no, that makes sense. I mean, also, there would be another entry into here that would, you know, for elevator access.
For a hand...
Yeah, but, but, yeah, no, that, yeah, I know what you mean.
Yeah.
I'm still, I'm still bouncing back and forth between this version and the other version.
Yeah, I wanted to try to get your take on that, thanks.
I think the other one was more pleasing, because those three elements together seemed really cramped.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, I mean, I think that they could be massaged, there's something, I don't know, there's something about the first version that has, the fact that it opens up to that...
Interstitial space, yeah.
It provides somewhat of an experience to, you know, in the new, that new part of the building to kind of overlook the landscape there and all that. It's just that I think the scale of that dormer, or that gable end on that side, it's just, it's just not speaking to the older building, the one to the north, the existing building, well enough.
Yeah.
And it's pulling kind of Bear Mountain Lodge vibes with the chimney.
Yeah.
Kind of like that, that's what I'm reacting to.
You know, one other thing is, I mean, just trying to get your take on this, that second floor where the porches are...
Yeah, with the board and bat.
Could get incorporated, you know, I mean, you know, there could be more of a porch thing in there, so we get almost both of those ideas in there.
Yeah, I think that's what I think, I like the, I like the setback of the porch, I like how it lightens things up.
Yeah, I like, I agree.
It really helps, and that's why, that's, I think I'm responding to it being there in the first version.
Right.
And that's why I like it, but then...
Yeah, that's what I'm, instead of like blocking it at the end, you know, we can keep it kind of rolling around.
Yeah, so, I don't know, I'm actually inclined, even though I quite like that one too, it's starting to kind of pull, you know, sort of French, like castle vibes now, so...
Question, like, are you going for Cape May, or are you going for like...
Right.
With the board and bat on the second floor.
Yeah, it's got, it's got a couple of different languages going, right? I agree with you, we just got to kind of land on a, on a vibe, and it's obviously got to be Victorian. You know, there's something nice about the stone.
Stone's great.
So I think the stone is super cool, because it lifts it up, it gives it that anchoring. I like the, again, the setback of the second story, what do you call it, breezeways, whatever... breezeways, whatever, really lightens things up. Maybe it's just a, a, a series of massages and tweaks.
Uh, yeah.
To the entry element, and, and then to that, that side elevation as it looks to the existing north building.
Yeah.
Can work on that a little bit.
Yeah.
Um, because again, there's fundamentally nothing necessarily wrong with it, it's just those, it's just these sort of, I think what can be solved easily moves that we gotta work through.
Yeah, and I think, I think the, the massaging thing, and, and, and I also had that, I, I like the porch.
Yeah.
Thing on the end.
Yeah.
But I also like the, the way that the whole thing composes, maybe mixing those together and seeing if that works.
Yeah, so, if you're asking me, I don't know if the board agrees, we can ask them, but I would, I would maybe gravitate toward refining version one, with a focus on that entry cluster, scale relative to the southern turret, and then how the, the new building at the north face speaks to the existing building.
Right.
Is the angle of that mansard equivalent to the, uh, the roof angle on the northernmost end of the historic home, or is it shallower?
Uh, same.
Okay.
Oh.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I was trying to pull that over, because I, I assume that that was sort of the idea there.
Right, and I have to agree with most of the comments visually on this, I think it needs a, uh, uh, it needs to be more carefully composed, fewer elements, it's a little busy. Uh, the thing that, I used to, um, work on hotels, and looking at the floor plan, I'm like, God, I just want to, I think that your composition is gonna benefit from having a more economical floor plan, because right now you have a lot of interstitial and unused, inefficient spaces, right? Like, I'm just gonna tell you, I would get murdered, you can fit two more rooms on this floor, right? Easily.
Oh, yeah, no.
Easily.
No, we started looking at the floor.
And that's a, that's a lot of money, that's more money than what you're spending designing this.
Yeah.
Okay? And, and it's, it's a huge value, and I think if you focused on that.
Thank you for saying that, because the, the client is here.
He's not a hotel guy, right?
No, it's good.
More keys.
And, 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 no, and, and we did that with, I, I, I didn't show the new floor plans, because we're not at that level of detail, but that, that's gonna happen with.
What I'm saying is that, that level of integration between the plan and the way it's, it's expressing itself is gonna help, uh, make it more rational, that you're not just, uh, uh, putting, moving set pieces around on a facade, composing them, you're also going back and forth. I think the porch is, actually adds some character to it, because you can put yourself on that porch when you're looking at it, and that's shade and shadow and depth, right? It's just the towers, it's, that needs a whole rethink and maybe don't overthink it, is that's, I would go there. I would try to simplify things.
I'll go back to the entry, the, the, the green canopy, right? We know we need to work on that. Think about how that might engage the parking, become more of like a porte cochere.
Yeah.
Of the kind of quality that a building this scale historically would have, when you pull in under it.
Yeah, exactly.
The rain, you drop your, you know, your kids and your wife off, and then you go park and get wet.
And the stone, the stone can come into that as well, so.
Yeah. Exactly, yeah. I think that's a nice opportunity to, to add, to add a little bit more volume to that, that whole element right there, that entry.
Yeah, no, that makes sense. Well, I, I did wanna, I mean, we, we can get into that once, once we get more solidified with this, but Karen, do, do you see like, uh, just landscape there, or some sort of like more formal?
Between the two buildings?
Yeah.
Um.
She, she gets paid hourly?
Yeah.
Right? You're like five hundred, six hundred dollars.
Yeah. Um.
To start.
I think it's gonna need some wall, right? There's a grade to deal with.
Yeah.
So terracing.
Combination of hardscape and landscape, yeah.
Terraced gardens.
Okay, I got it.
Yeah, I would terrace the gardens.
There's no lighting, huh?
No, not yet, but I, I, I really do appreciate the direction this is going in, um, and I got a couple of questions about the experience as you drive in. I think this is, we talked before about, you know, engineer, an engineer approach to lighting and a designer approach to lighting. You, you can't prescribe this. If you go prescriptive lighting design, which you ruined it, you have to have a, an experience as you travel into it. There's parking spots on the front side, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so poles are out.
Yeah.
Right? You, you can pole this place, because it's your first experience rolling into that, you're gonna be staring up into a pole, you're gonna lose your whole facade.
Right.
Right? And then you're gonna lose the experience of the landscaping and everything else that goes along with it. So I really think you need to consider maybe engaging a lighting designer on this, or someone who can really get into an artistic kind of view of this.
I know a guy.
Yeah. I don't know if you can afford me, but.
Unfortunately, my, my, my main choice for lighting designer is unavailable.
This, this is a very good opportunity for that, because again, if you, if you go prescriptive, it's dead, it's the first thing you roll into, and if it's about asphalt and lumens per square foot, it's done.
And the tying that into the landscape.
Absolutely. This is a very, very good example of having to use like indirect lighting and landscaping and facade in order to achieve your, your code requirements.
Hospitality all the way.
Right. And, and I know it's not on here yet, but this is the time to start thinking about that, right?
Yeah. Certainly think about that now.
Thank you, but much better direction. I, I really like the stone, I like the color, I like the, you know, the kind of mouthed vibes.
All right, so, yeah, I mean, I think, let's see what happens with that northern end of the addition, but, but I, I, I understand the comments.
Yeah, I think the, the entrance sequence needs, you know, definitely attention, you know, right now you're just, it's a blank asphalt, um, front yard, so I think the building will, um, deserve more than that.
One, one little.
Go ahead.
Quick thing for me to consider on the entrance section. You, you're looking at, obviously, in all these designs, you're looking at asymmetry, you know, which is very appropriate to like Queen Anne structures and stuff. There is, uh, there is a feature that I've seen on some historic Victorians where front-facing gables partially overlap each other?
Oh, no.
You know, they're different sized, you know, but they, they, and maybe that's just something to look at, to see versus the very sort of symmetrical triple element.
Well, I think, I think either way, something like that could be looked at, yeah.
You could, yeah, you could, I'm just saying, it would be interesting to see if it, if it did anything to play with some asymmetry in those three elements, or the kind of overlapping front-facing gables.
Yeah. Yeah, just looking at it from here, as I kind of blur my vision, the first version, there is a nice symmetry asymmetry going on. Um, so again, I think just generally, you're, you're in a really good direction, so thank you for.
Oh, in, in the, I mean, in, in this first version anyway?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, is there, is there a general?
Consensus?
Yeah.
That's a good question.
Of which one?
Which way to go?
Just in terms of which direction, uh, in terms of, so he's got this version, which is the more sort of prominent.
Better, or better?
Many of us.
Number one.
Number one clear, or this version.
Number one.
Number one.
Yeah.
Everybody certainly wanted to preserve those porch breezeways. You had.
Well, they're still, they're still.
It's heavier.
Yeah, it just, it does, it kinda, it stops the conversation between the two buildings.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I think, again, I think there's a really neat opportunity to have a relationship between those two buildings, uh, with that landscaped area in between them, and have that, that zone in between the buildings really be activated in the nice experience. And it, and it would be hard, I believe it would be harder to do with that turret there on the end.
Yeah, and maybe the porch on the north one wraps around and connects to the landscape.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, it, it, it does theoretically.
Well, you know, I, I'm imagining that, you know, that gable, as it's open, it's got that big chimney, the chimney set in, you can have an outdoor sort of fireplace there, you can sit on that deck and you can overlook the landscape, right? That whole, that whole area can be really nicely activated.
Yeah, because then it becomes related to the.
An outdoor lounge, exactly, you can look over the landscaping.
I think you need to Victorianize that little side bit.
Good word for it. Have lawn, pockettle versus.
That's my, my V button on the.
Put your V button, yeah.
Um, I have a code question on this, the screen, like the requirements for screening, since this isn't attached now to the, to the original structure, like where, what's the requirement for screening?
Yeah, so this is.
Landscape screening?
Well, no, going back to the HLO sections of the code that we just reviewed, right? And specifically in, uh, two twenty-three, twenty-four, seven, remember, there's two buckets of uses. There's like historic arts and cultural uses that are kind of, not a lot of regulations attached to them, and then there's this other residential, professional, and, um, like accommodation. So hotels within those uses talk specifically about, says hotel and hotel-related accessory uses and structures with adequate, adequate screening of any new structures from surrounding public street views. So that was my first comment in my letter, because I just wanted to talk about that. And I, I don't believe the intent of the code, when you're saying adequate screening, means that new structures cannot be visible, right? There's other regulations that talk about them being smaller than the historic structure and kind of setback from the historic structure, but that was something that I wanted to put in front of the planning board, because this is one of those subjective things of talking about adequate screening. And you do have the ability, because remember I went through, there is, this next section after that does allow the planning board, um, to massage some of those limitations, some of those caps, some of those items, um, based on the building size, building configuration, nature of the proposed preservation and/or adaptive reuse of the buildings, and/or the historic nature and context of the building. So I think that's something we'll just need to talk through and kind of memorialize here and why this site is maybe unique, because I think what we were talking about a little bit with the lighting in the front, in the parking area is not having that screen what is being created as the entrance to this building. And so if we're talking about a hotel use with an entrance that I, you know, there's gonna be some run of, some changes to and how that shows, is, what does adequate screening look like for that? It's not obscuring it, right?
And, and, and just to go further with what you're saying, I, you know, I think what, what Karen and James are saying about the integration of the landscape and the lighting is the way to focus on that, you know? Because, I mean, something has to be screened, but it's how you do it and how you light it and.
Yeah, I just mostly wanted to get the board's feedback on, my interpretation of the code is that section does not mean new construction cannot be visible. And I feel like what the applicant is asking here tonight with kind of this is, is, is this in the direction to continue to go with? And I think that's a really prominent question for the board to discuss and weigh in on, to allow this project to move forward with new construction being between two existing structures, obviously one more historic and designated than the other, but, you know, I think that's just something worth discussing, because I think that's point A, to be able to continue on in that direction. And so that doesn't come back up later at the end when we're talking about going through these criteria.
Is there, is there any room in the back, on the backside of the building to move some of the parking, like from the front to the back?
Uh, not, not in order to have as much as we have, we maximize the parking in the back, and, and that also provides some of the fire protection that we need, if, or access. But, but because of the grades, we couldn't really get more parking back there.
What about shifting it to the south, like, uh, the cur, there's like a bit of a curve where there isn't bump out parking?
I'll, I'll look at that, there, there is, man, I know we, we looked at that pretty hard, but I'll review that with, uh, the side several.
Yeah, I mean, if we could just, yeah, think about the entrance sequence, I think that's gonna be.
Yeah.
I think, yeah, my other question was, there's a lot of existing landscaping and grades there, so I think it'll be important for the board to be able to understand, like, because I heard you say you're grading the existing parking area down lower, right? So that the new construction can be sitting even lower than the historic structure.
Right.
What does that do to this natural kind of, it's not a berm necessarily, but there's a grade change between the road, and then there's trees planted, so like, what's happening there? Is that going away?
No, I mean, that, that, that's sort of like the curb over there is sort of the hinge point.
Okay.
Of where the parking is changing, but we'll make sure that that's.
I think, yeah, there's a, there's a super prominent stand of mature evergreens there.
Yeah.
That screens the existing building and it makes its way toward.
Yeah, they're, they're very unhealthy historically.
What's that?
They're very unhealthy, they may have to be replaced at some point.
No, they don't. So, please don't remove those.
Yeah.
Because I think when it comes to screening, I, so, one, Natalie, I, I agree with your interpretation, that screening doesn't mean that new construction needs to be visually obscured completely, right? It would be virtually impractical here. I think a couple of steps already in place. Number one, disconnecting the existing historic building from the new building is a helpful aspect of visual screening, if you will. As well, it's going to, it's going to ultimately come down to the treatment of landscaping, maintaining that existing stand, helping to soften, you know, the experience of the hardscape, the paving of the driveway, et cetera, and parking up front, and lighting, quite honestly.
And, and, and just for that particular question about the stand of the trees, I mean, right, right now, it's like that row of trees that we were talking about for forty-five feet. Can that be modified to sort of compose what you see, or, or you just leave it alone and never, never touch it?
Uh, those are, those are probably sixty, seventy-year-old trees, they're huge. I would, I don't know why you would want to modify them, why would you?
I'm, I'm not sure when they, when they came in there.
It's a straight line.
You know.
I'm just curious why you would ask that question.
Well, more, more like, in, instead of a big, you know, mass of trees, can, can you trim them and shape them and, you know, work, work with what's there? But, but do, do a little composition instead of just leaving.
Like Edward Scissorhands kind of stuff, or? Are you saying lop the top off so that you can see the river? What do you, what do you, I, I don't know what you're referring to.
No, just like, like, right, right now, if I'm picturing it correctly, it's, it's sort of like a one mass in a line.
Yeah, it's a big, it's a big line of very mature, healthy, very healthy evergreen.
There's actually a lot of, there, there, the lower limbs are no longer on the trunks, and so the, the canopy actually is quite elevated, and you can see the existing buildings under, under them.
Right. Well, well, and, and that's part of, and can, can we add to it, can we trim and compose something there?
I think, yeah, a bit of maintenance and then augmented, you know, augmented with landscaping in and around and in between, sure.
Okay, yeah, just, just so, I mean, there, there's not a requirement in the way that the code language works, that says you have to never touch that.
There are tree rules, right? There's.
Oh, yeah.
Mature trees are encouraged to be maintained.
Yeah, no, not, not removing, but just like working with what's there a little bit better.
The evolution of this will include a fuller landscaping plan that will evolve just like we do with the rest of our projects. So the important piece is to get the site working and functional building or otherwise that we can advance that. I think today's helpful for us to kind of get to that next step in that fuller design goal, between the buildings, as Karen pointed out, and then of course getting into the site. Because I think Natalie highlighted that day one, that, that entryway, and I think it's been James sort of emphasized about lighting, so all of it will work into a design that again focuses on the historic building, but is supported by these elements, Victorian Because I think Natalie highlighted that day one, that entryway, and I think it's been, James sort of emphasized it with lighting, so all of it will work into a design that, again, focuses on the historic building, but is supported by these elements, Victorian, and consistency with certain things broken up to be not just, you know, Fairmount, or other references, but to be beacon and Victorian, all the, you know, all the like. I think we have a lot going into it, but landscaping will absolutely be incorporated on the frontage. Sorry about Karen.
I think you also might want to consider, like, where you actually enter the site from, because I dropped my kid off at Rose Hill for many years, and coming in from the south, it's a little bit, you know, like, it's kind of a treacherous entrance, and it might help your whole sequence if you just consider possibility of changing the curb cut.
Keeping in that position, but flaring differently, or?
Uh, no, actually moving it north.
So we, there are some changes, I know Mike has mentioned in previous submissions, about how, just the grading of how that will be in the future design, but we'll look at that, but I know that Mike has at least changed the grading, so I know it's kind of a dip as you take the turn in. Dip up, but dip nonetheless.
Yeah, it's a fender scraper.
Yeah, coming up.
Oh, it's not, it's not steep. That was part of the thing, lowering the.
Yeah, but also, it's just like where it is on the curve, it's hard to, coming out, yeah.
We all remember. We all had kids there. Anyway, so we heard a little bit from Natalie. Did you have other comments you wanted to highlight?
I did, but I think you guys got a lot of them. I think that was the really big one for the stage that we're at. I just wanted to make sure that kind of got discussed now, so it doesn't come up again. So I think everything else can.
Mr. Russo?
No, no comments.
Oh, okay, yeah, it's a little early.
It's a little early.
No, no SWIP?
No, no. But if we want to go into architecture, no.
Maybe the mayor's illicitly connected into the sewer system, we'll see in time.
Don't touch that third rail. All right. Anything else, folks?
No, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Ari.
You want to, we're going to take a two-minute break. Are you guys next?
Yes, sir.
I think we can get back to it. Yes, we have everybody? Does he need to be seated before we start?
We just lost counsel.
Counsel, want to wait for counsel?
There's no hearing or anything set yet, so, no procedural actions, yeah.
Well, we can get going. Next item on the agenda is the continued review of application for site plan approval, mixed-use commercial and residential, three hundred Main Street. Good evening.
Good evening, for the record. Taylor Palmer with the law firm of Cuddy and Fader, on behalf of the applicant. Hope everyone gets a chance at some point tonight to see that strawberry pink moon. In the meantime, I am joined by R.A. Siegel, our architect, guy who got to keep the flow from the first presentations through, seeing who's keeping track at home.
Sorry, who?
R.A. Siegel, architects, that's the name of the firm, new to Beacon, as well as Dan Kohler of Hudson Land Design, also new here. But as you mentioned, Mr. Chairman, thank you, we now have Christian Soffel compliment here. We are before you tonight for the continued review for the application for site plan approval, proposing to construct a new three-story mixed-use building, commercial and residential. Before I do turn it over to R.A. and Dan to go through the site plans and the engineering materials, if I may, to give you provide a quick summary of the changes that we've incorporated into the project since our last meeting with you on May thirteenth. As is more fully detailed in our May twenty-eighth submission, the visual experience on Main Street facade within the retail arcade has been further developed. For example, we did divide up the windows, excuse me, divided windows have been added to the upper portion of the retail storefront and the retail display windows within the arcade way, as well as in the front-facing bay windows on the upper floors of the building, and that serves to tie the different components of this project together. Metal accents have been added to define and separate the area between the second and third floor bay windows. And then the shape of the canopy ceiling over the retail storefronts in the retail arcade has been softened by substituting an arched ceiling for the flat ceiling that had been included in our prior design. Importantly, additional lighting has been added within the retail arcade beneath the canopies, so that contrasting color stripe has been included in the bottom of those canopies to brighten these. These design changes are aimed at enhancing the overall experience for the residents, as well as the visitors that come through the arcade into the different commercial As we mentioned during the May thirteenth meeting, the applicants really have a clear vision for this project and the site. They want to create a pedestrian-oriented, attractive, warm, inviting space that encourages people to come in and explore, you know, the full, you know, breezeway there and the full arcade. Additionally, as described in our narrative in our supplemental submission, the overall site design is consistent with the characteristics, standards for the CMS district. Of course, this is not in the HDLO. Details and calculations demonstrate those consistencies have been added to the plans, and then additional engineering materials have been provided as well. So maybe I'll switch it up, since Dan's right in there nicely, while Dan come up and talk about his piece, and then we'll go to R.A. for the visual.
Good evening, Dan Kohler with Hudson Land Design. Our, our submittal in this last month really focused on a few things. We had an I and I study that we, we took a focus on. We also had a better understanding and gained a better understanding of all the utilities in the area for our utility connections. We're proposing a new water service connection, and we're proposing to reuse the existing sanitary sewer connection, subject to some video inspection to make sure it's got a good integrity. Of course, that'll help us eliminate one cut across Main Street to make a tie-in for the sanitary. One of the other focuses was stormwater. We've taken a good, hard look at the preliminary design of a stormwater system here. In essence, a good portion of this site flows currently to the north and the east onto adjacent private properties. This proposal now calls for gathering some of that stormwater, stopping that flow off of the site, and gaining a little bit of a stormwater recharge to the surface, which is, it's a very small amount, but there is some that we're looking to get here. And so now, we've, we've provided those design details in a report for, for John to review. So that's really the focus on the engineering at this point. I'll turn it over to R.A. for architectural.
Yeah, so basically, we had some relatively minor adjustments. You know, we listened to what you said about the, that, you know, bay window and its relation to the canopy, and the canopy detailing and proportion, and how the underside was treated. So we, we made those adjustments, sort of tied the, that projecting bay more into the storefront design. Apparently, the applicant is not a fan of the grid, so that may change, unless you like it a lot. But we got some last-minute feedback on that. But essentially, you know, so we changed the profile and proportion of the, of the canopy and how it relates to the, to that window. We, you can start seeing some of how that's detailed out here. The little ceiling components underneath the canopy, and as you walk through there, are curved with concealed light at the top of it. It's almost like that, like the Kimball Art Museum idea, but with LED instead of sunlight. That's a view that starts to show the lighting, you know, the lighting on the pier is something that the applicant also identified, that, you know, they wanted a little bit more traditional like that. And then that's a view at night, so you can get an idea of how the lighting has worked. So, you know, basically, we tried to conceal the light sources, but, you know, grazed the building where we can, and again, not interfere with the tenants. I mean, that was sort of the focus of the changes.
Let's do the round robin with consultants, and then the feedback from the board. I'll start with Ms. Quinn.
So first comment is regarding the separation between the adjacent building at three oh four Main Street. So the applicant did clarify in their last submission that it's a two-point-three-foot gap between the proposed building. So I'm looking at one of the renderings where we have a white space next to it, and this one looks better. I think this one, you can actually see the separation in the one, the rendering that's being shown. So it's a two-point-three-foot gap, and a lot of that has to do with the adjacent building being set back from their, from their property line a little bit. But I do just think that we need to think about, and I included in my letter, a few examples of how different buildings along Main Street have handled that, some, I think, a little bit more successfully than others. So just want to think about, I mean, you just want to avoid, obviously, you want to keep that space for maintenance, but you want to avoid that becoming kind of a trash accumulation or space for negative things to be happening in between these two buildings. So some kind of barrier there, I would like to see that proposed, and just that space thought about a little bit. For the frontage occupancy, so within the CMS district, there is a minimum eighty percent frontage occupancy required. I am counting the gap of the entrance to the pedestrian spaces as not frontage. Let me read this exact section of the code, just so we know where we're at. It says, "For, frontage occupancy is the percentage of a lot width which must be occupied by either front building facade or structures that screen parking." And so I think the applicant was trying to make the argument that the entrance to the pedestrian arcade is facade. I would argue it's not, but the planning board does have the ability to reduce the frontage occupancy for buildings on Main Street, specifically for if a lighted pedestrian passageway to a public space is provided. So I think that's the much safer route to acknowledge that that's what's being provided, that the frontage occupancy is only seventy-two percent, which is less than the eighty percent minimum, and that the planning board discussed whether they feel like this pedestrian plaza is a sufficient reason to kind of reduce that occupancy.
Natalie, can I just, is the seventy-two percent, does that include like the upper floor?
I'm looking at the ground floor, so I did, so I did fourteen-foot wide pedestrian entrance on a fifty-foot wide lot. So that's the calculation I used to get, seventy-two percent. You can correct that with actual dimensions.
Oh, no, no, I'm just wondering if.
Looking at the frontage occupancy on the ground level, on the street level. Yeah, on the street level there.
Okay.
I think that's the intent of the code, when they're talking about things like screening of parking, it's obviously not going to be happening on the upper floors, right?
I understand, yeah.
Yeah. So I think that is something within the planning board, the ability to reduce that, and I think that's the clear path forward here. I appreciate that you provided the narrative, kind of addressing the architectural design standards, because you, you have both the CMS district ones as well as the HDLO, oh, sorry, no, you're just CMS, sorry. So you went through the CMS ones to address those, you gave us the transparency calculations to show that you're meeting code. There was just a few spots where the narrative could have been more specific, rather than just restating the language of the code, right? Like, instead of referencing traditional building materials being provided, can you tell us what those materials are and kind of spell them out, right? Or proposed windows are greater in height than width. Just give us the dimensions, so we have that on the record, and we know what the height and width of the windows are. So just like a few more details in there to demonstrate compliance, I think, would be helpful, and meet the intent of that request. The one thing I did note is that it looks like the applicant is proposing a cellular PVC in lieu of wood for trim of elements. So I get that that's used for, to be a durable substitute for wood, but it is, I believe it would be classified as a synthetic plastic material, which may be considered inconsistent with the, with the code.
On that one, I mean, we've, we've used that on a number of projects, but should we get a determination from Brian?
Yeah, potentially. Again, I'm flagging that synthetic plastic material is discouraged, PVC, I believe, would be synthetic plastic, so if there's a precedent, I don't know if that was CMS or if that was discussed, and I'm relatively new, I think, to the city, so just flagging that as potential inconsistency with that code.
Yeah, I think it makes sense to get.
And then, just finishing my comments, so for signage, just noting, I didn't know if you wanted these to be approved as part of this, or that's going to be separate signage application to plant, to the building inspector. So just noting that.
Yeah, I mean, that, that can't be approved generically like that, right? Saying signage.
Yeah, what, the way I read it is that you're showing, you're designating a space for signage, it's not the actual signage, and it would be certificate of appropriateness for whatever tenant came in to apply for signage. So we may want to talk about how you're designating an area or a zone for signage, and maybe codify some restraints for, you know, a future application for signage on the building, because this is, it does represent some unique, uniquely different signage opportunities.
And just integral to the architecture and things like that, is what I was thinking, in terms of where they're being placed, right?
Right, right, where signage would be designated.
Yeah.
I see.
And that was it for my comments.
Great. Mr. Russo?
So as Mr. Kohler stated, they did perform an infiltration and inflo study, an I and I study. They didn't find any connections, so we're good there. They did submit a drainage report, we have been reviewing that. Dan, with regards to the infiltration rate of the soils, you had mentioned five inches per hour. I didn't see where that came from, so I want that clarified. We'll have to do some soil testing, verify that that's what you're actually getting out there. Construction cost estimate, they acknowledge it, they'll prepare in the future once the project progresses forwards. And then there was a lot of other cleanup items with regards to some of the details on the plans. And then the only thing I didn't have, Dan, is I'd like to have a profile of the waterline proposed for the building, since you're going all the way across Main Street and you have a number of utilities to cross in that road.
Thank you. Yeah, so I think that the biggest thing that stood out to me in terms of the difference between last time and this time is just that, it's those, it's a sort of historic nod, the very small light in the, in the windows. It's, it's sort of a mix of eras. It's, it's a modern building, right? It is, you know, the most prominent features being the punched windows with no divisions, no lights. I mean, we've seen that done before, I think the proportions are nice. So to introduce those sort of tiny, kind of like English tea shop sort of divisions is a little out of keeping. I think that, you know, the, the element above the opening, that bow window or bow or whatever, that protruding window, I think it's a nice feature, but I do agree, I think that the, the smaller lights is just not in keeping. So maybe there's a way to sort of put a modern twist on that, maybe look at some other way to divide them elegantly, but in keeping with the sort of modern feel of the rest of the building.
Right.
And then those lights over the storefront, it's almost as if you took a historic storefront somewhere else in Beacon and just crammed it in here. So it's, it's a little kind of off-putting. So, you know, I don't think it's necessary to have those, but I do think the treatment of both of those, and I honestly think that the ones above the storefront can be just without lights.
Right.
It's just a matter of then how you then finesse and bring appropriate scale and proportion to the divisions on the.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, part of it was that, and then part of what we also talked about was, you know, I don't know if you remember the previous version, the bottom of that bay kind of ran into the, into the canopy, and there wasn't as much of a solid division between the second floor and third floor.
Well, I think you certainly need that span rule.
Right.
That needs to be solid, so the fact that you've introduced it here is fine. My personal, I don't mind if it runs into the top canopy. Quite honestly, I think it would be better, it sort of gives a sort of vertical quality to that element, and it announces its prominence a little bit more. And even if you took it a little bit higher, just to, just to maintain that verticality and the prominence of the element, I think that would be fine, too. My fellow board members may not agree, but I think it's really just subtle moves at this point. My, my view of the frontage is, I mean, I don't know how much leeway we have as a board, but, you know, to some degree, the fact that they don't have the required frontage is countered by the fact that they're creating this very unique arcade element with storefrontage along that super unique-to-Beacon kind of arcade.
I mean, that, that seems to fit the.
Oh, I think absolutely, the code is very specific that it has given you the power to reduce that occupancy if something like that is permitted.
Yeah, I think, I think this would be just another building, and there's a really unique quality to what you're creating here. And especially, I think, again, this is another instance where lighting is going to really help this, this building, and especially that, that element come alive and really, you know, sing and be a sort of a special, like, I think of like, you know, you know, like, areas of Japan where they have these, these sort of unique, like, sort of unexpected moments, and it's really cool. So I would, I'm in support of waiving that element of frontage for this experience. I would support that, too.
Me, too.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think it's a really beautiful start for the building, and I would only say, like, I think that looking at the, like, modern historic balance, I actually would like to see like a division in the wind, in, you know, in the, in the upstairs.
Sash windows?
Just a, yeah, but, and then, you know, yes, like, reducing the amount of divisions in. in the bay window, maybe, you know, two by three high might work, and maybe slightly more detail on the corners. Just so there's a little bit more tension between traditional and like, and modern.
I really appreciate it.
But I really like the arcade, I really, you know, I think it's lovely.
Yeah, I think pulling back the canopy was an answer.
Yeah, and at the beginning of the arcade, is it, are those just display windows that are in the brick portion?
Yeah.
Yeah, those are great.
Just trying to keep it activated, so it feels like part of the building.
It's like little vitrines.
Yeah.
It's really coming along. I think you need a detail page for the coves, some kind of detail of the coves and how you're going to make that work with the lighting.
The cove lighting.
Yeah, you need a detail of what the coves are, how they sit inside of it, how you take the corners, right? Kind of like, you know, where are you going to punch through the building in order to get your transformers and such.
Yeah, yeah, you're mentioning that you have to watch the corners.
Yeah.
Otherwise you get...
Yeah, not just that, it's, because you had, on the front side, you had like a linear, like the L four or something that went up, and now it goes down, right? So that's even more important to get that detail, because you're going to be able to see up into that, and if you don't nail that detail, it's just going to be a...
Yeah, the idea was to kind of block that, so you don't see the source, but it does its thing.
Totally. Not having the details where that goes wrong.
Right.
Right, because if you leave that to a builder, it's going to get hefted. Seriously. And if, you know, the only other thing that I've mentioned is just that if you do a detail sheet and you pull off the L five and L fours, you can show the whole run of it as opposed to just kind of the dot that you have going right now on it, it doesn't show the whole run of the L fives, it's just kind of like a highlighted so you can see where it is. I can see the dotted line behind it, but if I was quoting this job out to you, I'd only quote to you the red lines. Right, so it might be useful to kind of carry that through to the whole run. But it's looking great.
I really appreciate the additional detail in the brickwork around the eight windows on the facade.
Agree.
Yeah, I like it a lot more than the initial rendering, you have that additional kind of course of bricks. And the Oriole window, even, yeah, even if the grids go away, I really like the spaniel panel, that detail, and I may be a little bit partial to it being separated from the canopy, although I don't know that that's critical, you know.
Quite honestly, you might not even see it.
Yeah, and the only other thing I was going to ask was about the center of the building on the west-facing facade, is that like intended to be like a hardy board? Is that?
Yeah.
Do we have to switch materials, or? I always find that kind of jarring when you have, you know, it's like a, it becomes like a brick barbell with the hardy board in the middle.
You're talking about the zone?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's an AIA classic, classic move.
It costs more to take it out.
Yeah, it's a cost-saving measure.
No, we'll look at that.
Is it going to be the classic beacon gray? Is that what you were intending?
Never going back to that.
That's the past. Well, you're also doing that on the east elevation, right?
Yeah.
So it's sort of in keeping with the language.
Well, I mean, I do, I understand the comment, though, and it might make more sense on the east, because you're right up against it and you see more of a differentiation, but on the west, where you're kind of seeing it off the street.
Yeah, I mean, are you reversed to putting brick there?
Yeah.
No, I think that might be a nicer, a nicer way to address that. Yeah, but I, yeah, I don't mind it on the east side. Yeah.
Yep.
Do you need the windows along the west wall of this building to satisfy light and air requirements?
Yeah.
What happens if someone buys Happy Valley and wants to build one of these themselves?
That's always a question. I think Beacon has addressed that by saying that if you're in that situation, they have to step back to at least provide light and air.
But you've also created, you have, you're not right up to their lot line, and you've created basically a light well.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's not, it wouldn't be what would be required in New York City, right?
No.
And is that, is that in the statute? Is this just sort of a convention that people have gotten away with?
I'm not sure.
Since thirty-four Main Street, let's say, is an example?
It's come up over time, so...
Is that a good policy? I mean, I hate to, I hate to mess up this building, because I think it's a great use of the lot, it's a great scheme, you know, the whole retail thing, but that's definitely a...
Well, look, you, so you're bringing light into the, basically, the public corridor, the shared corridor, right?
Yeah, there's something, let me just switch to the plan so we can see what's going on there.
And again, you've created a, you've created a light well, so no one's going to build right up against those windows.
Right. Yeah, no, I mean, we're set back, so those are going to be there, but they're not apartment windows. The ones at the front and back of the lot?
The ones in the residences, yeah.
Yeah, those are set in, so that they maintain that, you know, we're not building lot line windows.
And I hate to go where David was going previously, but would this be considered a taking of the adjacent person's property owners' rights if you prevent him from fully developing? Why is that? Why is that? Why wouldn't he be able to get relief administratively or judicially?
Because there is case law on this, and courts have held that it's not a takings.
Then that's, then that's the answer I wanted, that's clear, okay.
And just to go back to the setbacks, the code does allow for, either for future development or existing development, to increase those setbacks on the side in the CMS district.
Okay, explicitly.
Yes.
Okay, great.
So let me ask you, though, you, on the front part of the building, the brick part, where the residences are, and then the other end of the dumbbell, barbell, those, are those on your lot line?
The windows are not?
No, 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 I understand the windows are set back, but if someone did come along and build a building right up against your building, those would be a little like, you'd be looking through that window into like the shaft with some other building right in front of your window, basically.
Well, I mean, I think that's what Christian's saying, is that there's some mechanism for protection there.
Yeah, so the, within the CMS district, it's a minimum side setback of zero feet, however, the minimum side setback can be increased to allow light and air to continue to penetrate to an existing building that has side windows or to allow future development.
So you're just lucky because you got here first?
That's what I'm saying.
I mean, also, just, you know, if you look at the plan, it's not critical that those windows are there?
Uh, yeah, it's nice, but what happens is, yeah, I mean, the fact they are there, basically, what happens is, you know, it's good to know that there's, you know, a mechanism to make sure that any future development doesn't mess up those windows.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we've seen this happen before in a few different applications, so, yeah, I mean, the fact that we're now in, you know, this point in time, and you can build it the way you're showing it, is fine. Cool.
You didn't buy Happy Valley, did you?
My, yeah.
I wouldn't.
I don't know, I miss my opportunity in Beacon to become, you know, real estate mogul.
Yeah.
I didn't have the foresight or the cash. Anyway, anything else? Okay.
You know, I have to tell you, I'm not convinced, looking at this, that you need those for lighter air. All your bedrooms have windows.
Yeah.
You only need them in bedrooms, right?
Yeah.
And in other, anyway, you know, there's, those are corridors and closets, you could, anyway, as you wish, but...
I mean, it's not the window of my closet, it's my favorite part of my apartment.
I'm not going to micromanage.
You're going to get nice evening light, the glomming. Okay, so we can, if we would like to, board notice public hearing.
Let's notice public hearing.
Okay, so that, is that a motion by Karen?
That's a motion.
Notice public hearing.
Second.
Second. Jim, all in favor?
Aye.
And then we could also authorize our attorney to draft neg debt for next month's review.
I make a motion.
Motion by Karen to do so.
Second.
Second by James, all in favor.
Aye.
Ari just passed out.
You may have, thank you very much. The only other question we had, I think you may have addressed at the last meeting, but I know we were kind of jumping around, is ARB review will be sort of done as a full contingent here for this happening.
We're doing it here, we're doing it really well, too, don't you think?
I like it, let's do it.
You get everybody's input, whether you want it or not. So we're going to keep it. The other one, we'll talk about that later, but that'll probably go to ARB.
Got it.
Oh, gosh, are you on the next one, too?
Just wait till next month.
All right, so this is item number five on our agenda, continued review of applications for subdivision approval and site plan approval, five unit multifamily dwelling, one ninety-three, one ninety-five, Main Street, yeah.
Hi, my name is, my name is Taylor Palmer.
Did Ari design this one, too? This is nuts.
I'm telling you, wait till next month.
You know, I never thought I'd say this, but I think we need more attorneys and we need more architects.
And now we need a lighting designer, too.
Okay, small town living.
Tonight I'm joined by an architect you may have heard of, named Ariya Siegel, as well as the project engineer, Dan Kohler, of Hudson Land Design.
Never heard of him.
We are also, I'm remiss, I should have introduced my colleague multiple times, but I have not, my colleague Jessica Zalen from Cuddy and Fader is also here. Tonight I'm also joined by the applicant, Andy and Jeff Barisha. Oh, I'm sorry, and, oh, he left, he's back there. Sorry, more of the family, all in the family, keep you in local. We are before you, as the chairman mentioned, for our continued review of our application for site plan subdivision, which is our lot merger approval, and proposing to install a three-story multifamily building containing five apartments, and to merge the lot to make up the premises and connect up to Cliff. Before I turn it over to Ariya and Dan to review the site plans and the parking study that we did submit with our application, like I've done for the last couple of matters, I'll just give you a quick update on our comments from May thirteenth to today. Richard isn't joining us tonight, but he will be providing some additional materials, specifically, I know Mr. Russo's been like waiting for this, and he's going to get it, vehicle turning diagrams and whatnot, so we're going to make sure that's included. So you have to wait till next month.
We've got a year yet.
As is more fully, as is more fully detailed in our May twenty-eighth submission, the visual appearance of the building has been refined and reduced. Okay, sorry. This is video, this is...
This is a video?
He wanted to see vehicles turning, so we have a truck going in and out.
That guy can turn anywhere. I know that guy.
He's a first line for everything.
So we have some comedic, yeah, we have some comedic relief, right? But we will show that in real time on plans, but we thought sometimes it's better to really hit the visual than it is to put it on the plans and see it in reality, so...
John really enjoyed that.
Yeah, because I was laughing because he crossed the property line that he shouldn't have.
John would like us to get a right tire easement, so that's like the old F. P. Clark's where you needed sight distance clearing easements for most things we talked about. In any event, we are on this property located in both the HDLO and CMS zoning districts, and a portion thereof of the transitional into the back. The metal overhang separating the first floor of the upper floors has been reduced, and it now covers the driveway and parking areas only, and it's been stepped back from the building facade to allow more light to enter the area we know that was common from the board. Supporting pillars on the first floor of the building have been changed from metal to brick. Landscaping, lighting and fencing details have been added to the plans, and a lot consolidation plot has been submitted for the consideration of the board. As we described in the narrative in our supplemental submission, certain architectural elements have also been incorporated to try and address standards in both the CMS and the HDLO. Certain other design standards might not apply to this project, given its location of this building behind the existing Main and Cliff Street properties. As I mentioned, Mr. DeAndrea will be joining us next month, but as noted in his traffic and parking assessment from Colliers, the project will not result in any noticeable impacts to traffic operating conditions in vicinity to the property. Additionally, the off-street parking provided for the project conforms to the city's updated or refined parking regulations, and as the board is aware, there are no minimum parking standards now for CMS, and a maximum of five spaces are permitted for the five units that are on the site. We are providing two spaces at present for the project. The traffic assessment illustrates also that the additional parking demand for the project can be satisfied by the available on-street, off-street parking, public parking within reasonable walking distance to premises, including directly next door to the project. As I mentioned, although you had the visual, we'll also have the turning diagrams on our next submission. So with that, I guess I'll keep, as we did last time, Dan first, and then we'll turn it over to Ariya. We have no more videos, maybe.
I'll be very brief on this. We are continuing investigation on the inflow and infiltration study. There were some things that were potentially noted that we have to do some more investigation on to really get to the bottom of where that's going. Added landscaping to the plans, and we've taken our first cut on the stormwater for the site. At this point, we're proposing some underground chambers to deal with some of the stormwater runoff from the additional impervious for the site.
Want to see the video again?
Yeah.
I want you to send it to me.
I think it's all AI, anyway. So, yeah, basically, we submitted updated plans based on the comments from last month and our discussions. It's still in the early stages, but we are looking at the facade design and made some changes there. For the first time ever, I may disagree with Taylor, that we do need to look at, you know, Natalie, I saw your comment, we need to look at all four sides of, you know, where it's visible from. So we are going to look at the side elevation.
I guarantee you, this will be visible from Main Street through the parking lot.
Yeah, that part for sure, yeah. So we're going to focus a little bit more on, you know, developing the side elevations in a similar way that we worked on the front. We did speak to the owner, he definitely wants to keep the first floor apartment. One positive about that is that now that we have more landscaping in that area between the buildings, that apartment is going to have at least like a landscaped area as opposed to just, you know...
Look, that's their choice.
Right.
I'm just remarking that this apartment is going to get absolutely zero light. It's deadly.
Yeah, we reviewed all that with them, and the opinion from there is that, you know, that they can find someone who will want, you know, a lower rent apartment there.
Yeah. Well, look, I mean, at a certain point, it is up to the, you know, the owner as to what they think they can, you know, viable.
And the market, you know, if it doesn't work, then...
I don't know, I mean, this is, I'll say this rhetorically only, this is one of those cases of if you can do it, should you still do it? Even if you can, so, but we'll get into that. Is there anything else, just in terms of your updates, that you want to share with us before we go around the board?
No, I just wanted to clarify, because, you know, we looked at the plan and engineering comments, so just to clarify, that place underneath the building is not intended to be like a delivery or emergency vehicle drive-through, it's a convenience that, you know, creates some access between the rear of the existing buildings and getting out to Cliff Street, but we're not looking for like vehicle clearance for a fire truck.
As long as the plans and the materials all consistently reflect that, then that's what we'll interpret as the proposal.
Okay.
Before you jump off of that, Ariya, they have the metal freezer behind the existing building, how is material being brought to that freezer?
So what they're doing now, they're coming through the parking lot, if that ever has to stop, and... and they can't do it from the Main Street entrance, they can get through here, but not with, you know, they would have to stop the truck in the driveway somewhere and carry it the rest of the way. But right now, there would be sort of like three ways that are.
And the elevations, do you show a car parked there, though, right? But that's not correct?
No, that is correct, yeah.
A car parked in that?
Yeah, so that's what I was saying, it's not meant to be a through, you know, like a thoroughfare.
Okay, but vehicles are still supposed to be able to get under there?
That they, a car can park under there.
So the intention is to have vehicle access under the building?
Not, just in the parking area.
Vehicle parking under it, but not a drive-through?
Right.
Okay.
I mean, it could work for most cars, but we're not counting on a fire truck any better.
Okay.
Do you want to show the video again?
I don't know.
Ari, I'm just a little confused because I'm looking at the site plan, I see the two parking spaces to the south of the building. Why, why is the, why, why is the overhang needed if it's not intended to be a drive-through? Why not just, why have that smaller first floor if there isn't some?
Oh, well, I mean, we, in order to get parking there, we needed to, you know, push it under the building, and then the apartments above are larger, so that, so the building is that dash line on the second and third floor. And you can kind of see that here. So we're only carving out on the first floor in order to get those couple of parking spaces there.
Is there a reason we need to have it paved all the way through then?
Not really, but it's more of a convenience that, I mean, cars could get through there, but like I said.
Where are they going?
Well, if they want to get closer to the freezer, you know, if they're.
So for deliveries?
Yeah, or just access from, you know. Yeah, it's general access, but the point is that we're not creating access for, you know, for large vehicles or emergency vehicles or anything like that.
So, all right, let's go back to the beginning. Right now, deliveries are handled through the municipal parking lot, right?
Deliveries are usually made through the Main Street entrance.
Sorry?
Deliveries are usually made through the Main Street entrance. There are some that come in through the parking lot. It's kind of like anything else, UPS, FedEx, anybody that wants to figure out a way, they're going to find a way. Sometimes that's through the parking lot, but the principal means would be through Main Street entrance or along the side, because right now there's no existing building there. It's just the parking lot for the city. On occasion, delivery drivers do pull up adjacent to Cliff Street parking lot, and they walk to the rear of the building to make the delivery. So there's that option as well. If necessary, we can certainly limit deliveries to Main Street or otherwise.
So this is, all right, I'm going to even go back even further. This is all one lot out to Main Street, is that right?
Yes, the only thing that is separate is the access off of Cliff.
Right, that's, right, yep. Yes, that is a separate parcel, and there's a turning radius issue there, but I understand that. So there's a, obviously, commercial building facing Main Street with a rear yard.
Yep.
Within which you're building this residential building. This is the nuttiest thing I've ever seen.
That's the one?
Okay, so, so you're constricting the rear yard and any, yeah, of the existing building.
We're not changing any firematic access or anything else, or delivery proposed changes. We can limit.
I get it, I understand. You're cramming a residential building in where it sort of really doesn't belong, but I'm just, again, I'm editorializing.
CMS zoning district with no density limitations, but we are certainly trying to accommodate, Mr. Chairman.
I get it, I get it. It's a, it's a very odd application, and yes, you're allowed to do it, but it's, again, rhetorically, should you really do it? So anyway. Yeah. So back to Natalie's question, right? I don't think it was answered well enough, right? So you're showing, you're showing two different things, and it goes back to Len's confusion, because I'm confused, too. On the site plan, you're showing two parking spots. No, I'm not, that's, I'm not seeing that.
Yeah, it's the whole thing. The dash line, yeah. The colored ones, the first apartment.
The building goes right up to the, how is that allowed?
CMS?
This is the unintended consequence of having no zoning.
I don't know if it's screening requirement on the side yard like that. I mean, in the same way, in the same language that Christian read earlier, the planning board does have the ability to require, let me see if the language is required in the CMS.
I think that's what the language is.
Again, I.
It might be allowed, not required.
I'm only saying this because it's obvious, right? So yes, by code, you can do what you're proposing. And I want to understand exactly what Natalie is getting at, but is this wise? I mean, I get you, I get the fact that you can do it, but should you, right? And I'm not going to, I'm not going to then say we should, you know, decline it simply because I think it's a stupid idea. I'm just saying, right? It's more of a, as, you know, Kevin just pointed out, it's kind of this, you know.
If I may make just a suggestion or just conversation point, because we're talking about units, you mentioned that, that preference on what types of lighting or how much light a unit might get. I mean, we were talking about units above a drive-through building, right, that was approved by the board, because we were talking about diversity of housing units and what stock is available. The comprehensive plan focuses on ensuring that there's additional residences and providing that. The applicant is trying to provide Main Street residential units.
Are any of these low income?
They're not required by.
Okay, there is no lack for residential units.
With all due respect, these are smaller units, the size.
I'm not going to argue this with you, okay? And I'm not going to argue the fact that you can do it, and it's allowed by code. I'm just, I'm just editorializing here. So I understand you have a job to do, but you're, it's falling on deaf ears. I get it. I get what you're going to say. It's still not great.
And now it's part of the record.
Period, right?
I got a question.
Shoot.
I'm just looking at this on the satellite view right now, and I'm thinking, I want to go down there and take a look at this myself, but what I'm seeing is behind Beacon Bread, whenever this satellite picture was taken, there's at least two cars, and it may actually be more cars, but then there's also the adjacent building, and I can see four cars parked behind that, and it looks like they would presumably be getting access through that Cliff Street entrance, or how are?
Cliff Street, they're going.
Yeah, that's the only way that out of this thing.
That's the way to get in. You have to go between the two cars on Cliff Street.
So then it's. So then we're not, to be fair, we're not really just talking about how much parking they're providing for what's being built, but we're also talking about, this is basically going to eliminate some parking that's currently there and being used. I mean.
Well, yeah, I mean.
Legal?
And relying on this municipal parking lot that's almost always full.
Well, this is, this is private property, so it's.
Well, no, but I mean, part of the rationale of parking will be okay is, well, there's this adjacent municipal lot, but.
That lot never has a space in it.
It's always full, yeah.
And the streets are getting full, I mean.
Yeah, we're not, but again, we're not saying that's the only parking that's available in that location. The study evaluated where there is available parking in relationship to the site, so we're talking about the four new units into the building. As you recall, from the old regulations, we looked at, you know, the existing facility, because the understanding was, Main Street buildings wouldn't typically be able to provide off-street parking, so the residents, so it has changed, the codes evolved to reflect that, but the study did provide more than just that lot, of course.
They're going to be praying for spots on the win.
Well, I mean, one of the comments that came out with regard to that study was that it was based on basically generic national data as opposed to anything that was site-specific. But I am, if there are people that are parking behind this adjacent building right now and are coming through Cliff Street, are they going to still be able to get access to those parking spots if you build this? And it looks like the answer is no.
Well, the question is, who are those people currently parking there? More likely, they're the owners, right?
Whoever it is, it's, they're parking there.
Well, I think there's a couple of things that are going to change in the site plan. For example, the dumpster location right now is on the city's lot, right? I mean, there are things that are operating under existing conditions that will evolve or change reflective of the site plan. So some things that are just conditions that are there are going to change in relation to this application. So we're, what we're proposing is on our plan, but if there are changes that we should work into this, we could certainly, I think if your question, Mr. Johnson, is whether or not those neighbors will have issue accessing their property, either from, I think you're thinking of Eight Cliff Street?
The question is, are we not just approving five residential apartments with one public spot and one handicap spot? Are we also eliminating effectively parking that's currently being used?
Yes.
It looks like, yeah, I mean, if there are residents in the building that are using the parking back there, yeah.
And then if so, is there, can this design be in some way changed so that that isn't a result? Because I think that's a bit of an issue.
Well, the way I would look at it is, is there, is there any, is there any requirement for parking for the existing building? And then what is the requirement for the new building? So those are two questions we need to answer, or at least you probably already have the answer, so what is it?
Well, it's.
We, it's in the, it's in the parking study, but we'll, I think we'll, there's a lot of questions that are related to these interrelated issues, so we'll have supplemental submission to provide that, but we'll also have Richard DeAndrea put more specifics about the existing conditions and operating conditions. I mean, I can list out, as you all expect, the different lots, the number, the demand and all that, but I'm hearing your comments and your questions and how it relates, so we'll try and adjust that response to reflect existing conditions, proposed conditions, who is or isn't parking there now, where these employees go, and how that relates to this relationship, knowing that this proposal is permissive, but we understand the concerns or comments, we're going to work that into better.
We have the ability to deny this, I think, right?
You have the ability to deny every application, absolutely. And you also have the ability to approve it when it meets the standards that are before you.
That as well, and I'm not saying that just to, whatever, but I think that one of the important things that would help us understand this better and our concerns and the neighbors' concerns, is if we could see a more detailed plan of the adjacent lots.
Yes.
But the parking lot, the way that it's used, and the adjacent structures, because there's, like the thing we were just talking about.
Let's have one conversation.
Is it going to impact the use of your, of your neighbor, you know, even if they aren't?
Yeah, we cannot.
Even if they aren't coming here to complain about the impact on their property, right? I think we have a responsibility.
They may, during a public hearing, they may. They haven't, but they may, and we've certainly, you know, been reaching out to them before that public hearing, too.
I mean, it's one of those things we have to address, and it would be, it would be derelict of us to not look out for everybody involved.
I think Kevin brings up a good point that goes to think Natalie's comments, it's just trying to get also different visual representation from Main Street through the site. I think Ari highlighted it. If I said anything to the effect that you wouldn't see it, that wasn't what I said. I just said that the where the building is located behind other buildings, but of course, we understand the relationship, and maybe some RFP that someday will be released, because I can't take advantage of that parking space or parking lot next to us, that could be itself a four-story building with a step back. So someday, all this work could be for naught, but at the same time, we're designing it to account for all those. So I think some additional understanding or impression of this building from Main Street is also, you know, looking in the site over the parking lot is an important component of it.
I kind of like that this is a little bit creative. I'm not opposed to the basic idea, but I'm concerned about making sure this is actually what's in the best interest of our community.
Makes sense.
Yeah. And then let's, let's just get to the building itself, right? You know, regardless of whether, so you're going to be able to see parts of this building from Main Street, but you're also going to experience it when you're on the lot. And right now, there's a lot of things I just don't understand. The east elevation has absolutely zero windows, and I really don't understand what the, you know, differentiation between materials is, the red brick, why it's jogged that way, and then the, whatever, it looks like some sort of semi-transparent element. They just have no relationship to anything. I don't understand it, and it just makes no sense. It doesn't even have like, you know, some sort of artistic like composition, so that needs work. You know, the relationship with the first floor windows, it looks like, you know, the sill is at like below knee height relative to the floor plate. It's just bad proportions. The way you sort of change up the difference between, you know, the column sizes and the, I don't know what that little entry point is with the white lintel as compared to the, you know, the sort of steel riveted lintel, that makes no sense. It's just, and then just going around to the west elevation, you don't actually show the west elevation, but I get a glimpse of it, these little recessed, it almost looks like tenement style, like, I don't know what they are. Balconies with the tenement style great railings? This is bad. And then the relationship of that to that column right underneath it makes zero sense. It's just, I don't know, Ari, I've, we've seen, I don't know how many applications from you, and I know, I know you, I don't want to sound like, like, you know, first-year architects, I know you could do better than this, man.
I know, it'll be better.
I mean, yeah, I mean, the building, it just, the proportions, there's just no pride in, you know, the design here. So it just needs a lot of work.
Can I ask a question?
I mean, if we're going to do it, do it right.
Why, why is a freestanding building preferential to just adding onto the existing structure in the back, where it's one-story? You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, volume, they need all the apartments they can get.
Well, it would, it would cut off, you know, access from the commercial space. They didn't want to keep it together, and it also had implications with the fire department access. Actually keeping it separate worked better.
You know, it doesn't seem that way to me. It seems less safe this way, doesn't it to you? As far as equipment access?
I had questions, but we met with the fire chief and, you know, reviewed the various options and.
I mean, I know, I can say I have rules, but it really didn't, that's one of the concerns I have.
Meeting's over.
Yeah, sorry.
Another concern I have, it goes back to the parking thing, that's occurring to me, that a solution that involved access going through to that adjacent building, one of the concerns I had just looking at this, this is me thinking, my basic experience has been that when you're, you know, when we're doing plans and we're saying this is where the parking is going to be, that's great, but especially in a smaller parking situation, in real life, people just kind of stick cars wherever they fit, and we're going to wind up with more than two cars parked behind here, and that could be an issue with the fire department getting access. Like, even though that's not what's being approved, it, when it comes down to it, you're coming home late from work, yeah, just stick it right here. I'll grab it in the morning.
I think part of it, I think importantly, I think you make a great point, Mr. Johnson, I think importantly, the existing conditions are those that have been there for many, I think, to bring it all around the circle, many moons, and I think what we're trying to do here is codify a site plan, right? Something that's in a condition that is enforceable, whereas when it's not, it's kind of the operating conditions that are there. It doesn't mean they should be, but it's kind of how things work. I think your point is. So if I may just want one, just one iteration of that further. We started with, our first presentation, we highlighted our proximity to the city's parking lot for a lot of reasons, because it provides access, it's easy. That's where, if an ambulance today had to come to the back of that building, where's it going? Bang, right into the parking lot and probably right through, or somewhere there around. But that's just, they're going to go where, the water's going to go where the path takes it. So I think with this application, we're trying to do a lot of that. It is somewhat, there is some reverse engineering, but that's because of the way that the site functions in relationship to the other lots. Again, if you were to take a, if you were a bird, you flew right over there, you'll be behind, you know, the other parking lot, behind the, you know, I'll call it Port Cachere, but the arch, you know, a little bit further south on Main Street, that goes back to another parking lot. Like, that's what's going on behind these buildings, and that's, that's kind of what the city had designed originally that has evolved into this transitional district. It was a parking district. Now we're T, we're transitional, which that access lot is. So overall, I mean, our, a great result would be to have some type of license agreement or otherwise to kind of insulate some of that through the city's lot, but we know the city has the potential someday to sell that and highest best use for something else. So, you know, we haven't entertained that discussion yet, but we are hearing the board's comments, and it started with a fire discussion, connecting the building, whether that could work, whether it was functional, and it wasn't from, for all the purposes we discussed or have been highlighted sort of through. sort of throughout, and it led to this design. This design has then evolved responding to comments on the board and trying to give it the relationship that it needs and we know it's not final by any means. So we have to, you know, keep working at it, but I didn't mean to take away from your, your thought, Mr. Jensen, I just want to kind of bring it together where we were from what we were trying, what we want to do and the reality, because you're highlighting it very eloquently, that the site itself can sometimes dictate how things work. The photo you showed, I understand from, from the applicant, Mr. Brisha, there was your call, there was a florist right in the, in the space, that was the flower, as I understand, that probably the flower delivery vehicle that had been utilizing that. But the tenants don't have parking back there, that's not under any leases, it's not used presently. I mean, it, it is for all the things we've highlighted, but there is no site plan codified sort of usage of that. And this, through this process, we're doing that. So that if it's an issue, if, you know, Christian decides, that's it, I'm coming in, I'm going to park there and walk to City Hall, well, if it's three spaces, then we can't do it, it's a, it's a code violation and Brian's going to go out there and ding them. So.
Well, okay, this is what I'm, I think what I was actually trying to convey, which is just an observation, but it's this, if you have a driveway going all the way through the back, when I'm coming in there late at night and going, I don't want to park a block away from here, can I squeeze the car in somewhere? If there's an active driveway, I can't squeeze it in. And to the extent people are using that area behind the adjacent building for parking, whether it's on a site plan or not, that also sort of eliminates that problem. Now, I realize that's effectively asking the applicant to give a right of way to a neighbor, but it seems like that might be the best way to address some problems, throwing it out there.
Yeah, I don't think we would object to something like that, especially if it makes the circulation and flow and meets, meets those standards. We do that pretty regularly, so we can definitely take a look at that. And we intend to speak to those before, Mr. Chairman, we, we do intend to speak to the neighbors more, in more detail, particularly Eight Cliff, who are the neighbors to that driveway access. Yes, you in the front with bracelets.
Speaking of the neighbors, none of the drawings, as I scan through here, give any indication of the relationship of the rear of now or formerly Reed or now or formerly Cabrera, those structures to this new structure.
Right, Six Cliff Street is a two-family and Eight Cliff Street is a two-family, well, it was a one-family, eight or six, and now it's a two-family.
That's all good and well, it doesn't, it doesn't respond to what I just said. There's, there's no indication, and I would like to see one, of the distance.
Right, I think Natalie's comment too, that's what, I think we're going to plug it in, not to interrupt you, but.
Did I?
It's just that whole, that whole opening to, from, from Main through the parking lot, which will bring in Six and Eight Cliff Street.
Yes, please.
But I think you've outlined the shed structures, but you haven't outlined the residential structures on those adjacent lots.
Yes.
On the site plan, you've outlined the shed structures, but not the residential structures on those adjacent lots.
Got it. I misunderstood, I missed, we can do it that way too, on the site plan.
Yeah, I'd like to see, I'd like to, and quite honestly, what would be really helpful is if we could see this in 3D, in its height relative to, en masse, relative to the, their, its relationship to those two buildings, those two homes.
Yeah.
That's why I want to see.
This is one of those things that if everybody was required to do that, right? If it was explicitly, it'd be fair to everybody, you wouldn't have to come back so many times. It's actually a convenience for you to provide that extra information. It provides a better context for us, we can make decisions quicker.
No problem. I think this is not to say it's like 1064 Wocot, but we're trying to get a lot of the, to evolve it further to represent Mr. Chairman's comments about the design of it, right? The 101 comments from Mr. Siegel are to get this in a position where the building's going to be where it is and the relationship of the parking, the access, so that it can evolve those more fine tooth comb details to get there. But we have no objection, we'll certainly include those on the plan and we're already pro offering, I think, in response to your comments and when the plan are some kind of a visual.
I mean, I, I, yes, it would be good to see them on the plan, but I'm, I'm asking, I'm making a sort of a different request too. I would like to see this in 3D. The relationship of this new building and its height to those two homes, again, I get it, this is a transition district.
The architect's shaking his head this way.
So he says yes, good, that's the right answer. All right, this has been fun. Is there anything else we can assist you with on this particular application?
There's no procedural actions tonight, but you, if you would like to stop hearing my voice, if I may ask you to jump a.
No, you're on the next one too, aren't you?
No, just the extension, that's in the miscellaneous business for, that is the Warp and Weft building, which is soon to be entering into construction phase.
I was wondering what was going on with those guys.
Yes, they've been with three, they've been dealing with contractors and bids and I have another good authority to know that it should be under construction come this fall.
So you're asking us for a favor?
I'm asking for an extension because there's no change in circumstances.
No, you're asking us to move you up.
Oh, yes, I, in that, in that regard, yes, absolutely. I am asking for a favor.
Ari is saying, don't give it to him.
Objection, Your Honor.
I know, I know that BMW is outside, it might have a key in it later.
Yeah. It's under miscellaneous.
I was going to say, it's Ari did the architecture, so.
He always does this.
He's, he'll stay.
He's always asking us for favors. Although, look, I, we haven't granted them all the time, so I think this time we'll make an exception.
True.
Because, yeah, I'm sick of hearing your voice. Yes, this is a consider request for one, one-year extension of, one-year extension? When do they, and I'm starting to build.
It's how the code, it's how these resolutions are written, so it's a comp, it's a, for the context, it's if, I, I don't remember this one offhand, but it, as far as what the code typically requires is either application or an issuance of a building permit, it changes whether it's from this board or from the city council. We've, we've sort of adjusted it with the zoning board, but they even have their own specific language about the building permit, whether it's issued, applied for, or granted. But if you see fit as six months, I mean, we should be under construction, but we're just asking to avoid having to come back when it will be under construction this fall.
I understand. Do you think it'll take you more than a year to build?
Well, we have to, there are other members of the public here that are involved in the access agreement conversations with the applicant, so it took the applicant some time to get access agreements from both sides to be able to enter into construction. So those are done and agreed to. So once, once the contractor is in, in construction phase, then the applicant has to approach those property owners again to start sort of their building clock. And believe me, in those agreements, they are very much incentivized to get the construction done very quickly.
Yeah, all right, well, I, whether it's a year or not, it doesn't really matter. You know, it'd be just, I'm just super curious, why they hadn't started already?
Would it be better if it was two, six months?
They've got, they've got their own self-interest to get this project.
Of course, yeah, it sounds like it. Okay.
Motion.
Motion by David.
Second.
Second by Karen, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, now get out of here.
And thank you for overruling Ari's objection.
Overruled. Thank you. So then, let's see, where are we? Okay, so we're on item number six. Yep, review of applications, these, next two are new to us, review of application for site plan approval, residential garage with accessory apartment, 17 South Cedar, submitted by Stowe Boyd. And it looks like Ari may actually have a full house on the agenda tonight. No, you don't have number seven, do you?
No, that's why I wanted to give, give that one up. I'm here with the applicant, Stowe Boyd.
Good evening.
And let me get the correct project up.
It's funny you'd be on this side because I'm on the zoning boards.
Oh, you are? Oh, yeah. Sorry.
Yeah, so basically the properties at 17 South Cedar, it's a large double lot, there's an existing house on it, there's a very small one-car garage, which is scheduled to be demolished. You can see it on the existing conditions plan. And then, yeah, so basically the application is for a garage on the first level and then accessory apartment above that. And it appears to meet the zoning requirements. The design is reflective of the existing house.
Is this a double lot?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Just looking on repeat.
Trying to imagine the South Cedar.
It's on the corner of Catherine.
Oh, yeah.
Round around the fence over.
A straight duty street for me.
The yoga studio.
This is where the location lands. And it's the Yogi, the yoga studio as well, I guess, on the side.
Yep.
Yeah, that's.
Thank you.
That's the long rectangular one.
Yep, thank you.
Formerly Penn Zeta's plumbing business.
I remember Freddie.
He's still around.
He's still around?
He lost like 100 pounds.
What? Oh my God, I got stories of Freddie.
Oh, I, I also have nightmare stories.
Freddie, I tell you, I think, I have to share this, my favorite, because Freddie was big. He was a big boy and like, I, I remember having him over once to, you know, check a leak under my sink and he got down on the floor and he couldn't get up and he had his assistant, remember his assistant?
The guy with the one arm?
One hand? He worked with my heater, hell, I know who you're talking about.
He had, he had his, he had his work arm and then he had his leg going out.
Right, no, he, he would hold pipe and solder it.
Yeah, and he'd solder his hand to it.
And it was bubbling up and he was like, oh, don't worry, I have a, I have a good arm.
He painted that hand himself, it was red paint, like Calvin.
And what was his name? Because he'd always, Freddie would always have to like, sort of like rock himself and then have his assistant like yank him up off the floor. And I'm like, oh my God. Sorry, I just, Freddie, good memories.
Beacon was a, was much more interesting.
I'm glad to hear he's still around and that he's, he's lost some weight. I love Freddie.
He's still, he has stolen the house, the duplex on the.
He was on for plank, I think. Yeah, anyway, anyway, let's move on. Thank you for that wonderful trip down memory lane, Freddie Penzada.
But, yeah, so that, that's sort of the summary of what Steve presented there.
I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
No, we're, we're done.
There was one issue that Natalie had raised and.
Yeah, and then I have to correct it too, so when we get there.
Let's go to Natalie and then John, and then we'll go around the board.
So one and two are small corrections in terms of just noting the correct zoning district and adding the location map that is missing from my version. So the apartment size, I made a comment and then Bruce and I have had a chance to talk and I think we've all come to, to agreement about what the code actually says. So, so the 50% requirement that's in the schedule tables does not apply to the accessory apartment, but applies to the accessory building, right? So the accessory building, garage and apartment cannot be more than 50% of the primary building floor area.
Footprint or whole floor area?
Footprint.
So it's all floor area, isn't it?
Floor, right?
It's footprint.
Is that what it says now?
Yeah, and that's significant because things like the building.
ADU table or the, I, see, I even have it listed as the ADU table, it's not, it's the accessory table. Maximum square footage permitted for each accessory building based on the total square footage of the principal building, so it's square footage. So I think that's where we're coming into an issue, so kind of ignore my comment because part of that is wrong, but, so, or maybe you can correct this, right? The existing principal structure online that Bruce has and that parcel access says is 1,326 square feet, which is kind of different than what you, it's, it looks like you're saying 2,102, so we just need to clarify that. And then what is the proposed square footage of the, of the garage and, of the total square footage of the new accessory building?
It's right around 1,500, if you do the garage and.
So I think we're coming up with a compliance issue there of that 50% of the accessory building to the primary. And so the reason, just so you know going forward, because this was news to me as well, the reason why that table does not apply to accessory apartments is 223-14E4. So E is talking about accessory buildings on residential lots. Number one of that is talking about, look at this table, right, for, for total sizes, but the bottom of that section says, this subsection shall not apply to accessory apartments. So the last bullet point.
If it were just an accessory apartment without a garage, then they could be more than 50%?
The accessory apartments right now are limited to the 200, 1,000 square feet.
We didn't change the law yet.
We didn't change the law yet, the law's not changed, we're still under the old code. So the accessory apartment can be between 200 and 1,000 square feet. The accessory apartment and the garage, which are now comprised into a new accessory building, that is what the code is saying, either has to be 50% of the primary building or a sequestration.
It looks like, it looks like each floor is 783 square feet, 27 times 27.
Somewhere around there. But if, so if the garage was, let's say the garage was sitting there existing in that footprint?
Existing is different because it's exempted out.
Oh, okay.
It's because this is new is the issue.
Oh, okay.
You know, because our next one is going to be almost 1,000 square, but it's in an existing accessory structure already.
Okay.
You know, the issue with this one is it's being built.
Right.
And it's more than 50% of the primary structure.
Does that make sense though? If I had an existing garage, I could put the apartment above it?
That's what the council.
I don't, I don't disagree with you at all, but that is not my choice. You know, the, the code in my opinion is very clear and it's.
I'd hate to have to go to the.
They're going to change.
Maybe, yeah.
Now, can I make another recommendation here?
Yes.
These plans, I'm just saying, there's no, you're not calling out any of the, what codes you're complying to and how, right? So that should be a requirement because we're paying these guys to do this sort of forensic exploration of what, what application, what, how you might be seeking compliance, right? So if you explicitly wrote that out, said this is compliant with this part, this part, this part, right? Like I have to do when I'm in the city of New York, right? I have to call that out, I have to show my path of compliance, right?
Yeah, and, and, no, I'll, I'll enhance it, but it.
Okay, and you've done that before.
Yeah, and, and it is on the, the regulation table and stuff like that, but I understand about it.
Yeah.
No, no, it could be clear.
It should be clear when the first time it's shown, you know, and that's something that I don't know if it's clear in our code that those things and the way they should be, especially since we have, you know, I, I know you guys get used to whatever procedure it is, but it's just, it's good practice.
Well, so this is relatively new stuff and being interpreted as, you know, so, but I, I understand what you're saying.
Right. And the other thing I'm interested in is I'd love to know, since we're contemplating changes on all these ADUs, we should be telling people, this is what compliance is now, right? And this is what the proposed bill will be. It's an excellent example, real life examples to the people that are contemplating code changes, how, how it affects the built form, how it, how it affects in reality the.
Yeah, so we can do that right now, so I think Christian, you worked on the last revision, but I believe the current maximum size, but we have to talk about, I feel like this, this chart now conflicting with that, but the maximum is 1,000 square feet or 50% of the, your accessory apartment can be 1,000 square feet or 50% of your primary floor area, whichever is larger. However, I think this application would still get, as long as that table, 17E stays the same, this application's still going to get tripped up by that accessory building 50% requirement.
And it, and it would because it's a new structure and it's also a garage. It's not just an ADU.
So we, we probably won't do this, but let's say he built the garage and then added on to it later.
Oh, tricky.
No, I'm, I'm just asking, like, how does that?
Well.
But that's what, that's what the regulations are leading, in a sense, saying do that. And of course, there are, you know, there are accessory apartments of this sort all over Beacon, but somehow miraculously got built.
Well, yeah, I will say, I mean, this accessory, if you're looking just at the site plan, right, this accessory structure is pretty close to the primary structure's size. So we're starting to come up against the line of what is accessory, so I think there is a little bit of size difference here, because we are starting to come up against is a little bit of size difference here because we are starting to come up against the line of what is accessory and what is.
But if they attached it with a brise, like brise soleil or whatever, then it's in.
Seven Willow. Yeah, attach a brise.
Like you did on Herbert.
Five.
Yeah, that's a bad precedent. I don't think Seven Willow is a good zoning.
Now, Herbert, you did.
Practice. To connect a, an accessory structure to a primary structure with a covered walkway is not.
Yeah, and I think it's.
A connection, in my opinion, as a zoning administrator.
And that's been interpreted a couple of different ways.
Well, there's a new sheriff in town.
Yeah, that's.
But is there a limitation, like if you just wanted to build a garage?
And it was two-story?
No.
With like storage above or single story?
No, no, it was just a garage, a two-car garage, is that permitted?
So, it would look like, I mean, if it was single story, it looks like the footprint of your accessory structure is 700 and something?
Yeah.
Like 780.
So, may, maybe still no, because what we have on record is the primary structure is 1,300 and so 700 something is still greater than half of that. So, even without the accessory apartment, this accessory building would be tripped up by the existing table.
So, how many square feet are we talking about? Like, what's, what's allowed prior to variance?
So, can I ask the question, similar question, which is what are you measuring the square footage of primary? Is it like both floors? Because it's a.
It is.
Total square.
Partial access has a number. And covered porch.
It's not the 13.
In enclosed porches, right?
No, porches are excluded out.
Yeah, I'm looking at this, I think, this law used to reference footprint and I think when they amended it in 2022, they struck that out and just went to the square footage on the primary or the, but it did use to say footprint and yes, that included covered porches and basement doors and that kind of stuff. It looks like now it doesn't include that.
Yeah.
So, coverage and floor area are different, for the previous one, it was a coverage issue.
Right.
This one, floor area, it excludes.
Well, you know what's interesting is that when you go to page two and it says, based on footprint of principal building in parentheses.
Page two of what?
Of the attach, of the attachment.
Yeah, I think they tried to change that lien in 2022 and they only changed it on one of the pages, is what they did.
But, but I mean, the footnote is left in, so the footnote is left in, so it could have been intentional that it's for the R6 and all of those, it's to be based on the footprint, then. I mean, I, we would, we would have to.
Our codes are perfect.
Obviously.
I'm so freaking lost.
You should have been approved this one.
You're just going to flood the zone. Well, I think, back to Kevin's point, instead of us spending, you know, the wee hours of the night.
Yeah, speculating.
Debating this, I would hope that you could kind of, you know, figure this out and come with your, your best interpretation and understanding.
Well, yeah, we'll make the argument that we believe is there based on the conflicting information.
Yeah. A couple of other things just relative to the building itself, if this is able to move ahead. One, you're showing a height that is stopping very short of the peak if it's intended to be showing the height on.
Oh, yeah, the height is taken to the middle between the eve and the ridge.
Is that what we do here?
For cable structures, yeah.
Is this in, is this in the transition district?
No, building height in the code is measured.
In the state code?
Yeah.
State, okay.
Or, I mean, I think it's in the zoning code.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is that right?
I think so.
We got another thing we got to.
I'm sorry.
The building is measured between the eve and the ridge.
Let's clarify that.
For a cable roof.
Vertical distance, let me see, um, to the level of the highest point of the roof, if a roof is flat, or to the mean level between the eaves and the highest point of the roof, if the roof is of any other type.
Right, that's bizarre, okay. So, so wait, the mean level between the eve and the who's a what's it?
Or to the mean level between the eaves and the highest point of the roof. The mean level between the eaves and the highest point of the roof.
I don't know what that means.
So, that being, if the eaves are at 10 feet and the peak is at 20 feet, you're 15 feet tall.
Right.
And if there's multiple peaks, it's the highest peak, right?
The highest.
The mean, then you have to do the mean.
I'm too tired for this. Then, okay, so another few quick observations before, we haven't, we haven't hit Mr. Russo's comments, but all of your materials are alluding to match existing. That's all going well, but we have no idea what's existing. Right, you've got asphalt shingle roof to match existing, eve details untrimmed, match existing, a little lazy.
Yeah.
So, we need to know what this building's going to look like, okay? Then, the other just aesthetic observation I'll make, especially on the front elevation as it faces the street, is that this canopy over the two doors, it's just something, something, it's looking at me in the eye the wrong way. Can we just like make that a simple shed?
Yeah.
Something just a little more aesthetically pleasing and balanced proportionally?
Yeah.
And then, you know, the rear elevation, I hate these elevations with zero, you know, like especially the ground floor, I get it's a garage, but no windows facing your neighbor. I mean, I know you have windows in the upper story.
Windows, yeah.
But this is, you know, it's just design stuff. Design 101.
And can I point out some embarrassing things, like your windows don't line up with your elevations? You have a double window on the side elevation in the dormer and the window that shows in the closet is a single window and you can't have the second one because it's in the closet? You see at the top of the stairs? Is that the right view?
Yeah.
Just a detail because you can't, it's, you know, and also it doesn't look like your, a car, two cars could get hit. It looks like it's, that, that door isn't wide enough.
It's a 16-foot door.
But it, it, it looks like if that car went straight out, it would hit the door.
Yeah, that's exactly right, because you've got a.
I'm with the car detail drawing over.
Well, you've got a column in the middle there, right?
Is the garage door a bi-fold or is it a roll-up? It's not clear.
I'll clarify that.
Just clarify, I'm just saying, there's a lot of open items here.
That's a good point, you don't show any of the, either of the two, uh, what would be north and south elevations. So, let's look at those. I agree with Kevin, is it a column in the middle of the, between the two cars?
Yeah.
Yeah, the other thing, if you had a beam going across those columns, it would hit the middle of the stairs, right? Think of the stairs going up to the floor level and that beam at the ceiling, that means, oh no, actually it would be, you'd have to check that it's not a head knocker.
No, it would, it would hit the, the wall of the stair.
Oh, that's, it's supported in the wall of the stair, not at the exterior wall?
Yeah.
That's all, okay, that's fine.
But no, I'll clarify all those things.
Also, just quickly, I mean, is this a super long run of stairs? Is that right?
Yeah.
Because I'm, I'm trying to think of a way to eliminate the two-door scenario there.
Why is it such a high ceiling in the garage?
Well, for being such a long run, it doesn't match with the second floor and the stairs, so.
Exactly, exactly.
It goes, it goes below that little area on the second floor.
Do you need the man door and can you put it in the back?
You've got the landing.
Sounds funky, look at the stairs.
Put the person door in the back.
Person door.
No, I mean, we may be able to figure out a way to combine the.
The doors?
The doors, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I understand you want sort of a separate, you know, entry, private entry to the apartment than to the garage, but if there's a way to, yeah, if there's, I don't know, if there's a way to just kind of help balance that elevation, again, it's simple, simple design stuff, but thanks. Thanks for looking at.
All right, we will, we go to zoning next and.
Are you going for variance?
Well, I don't know.
I, I think we need to know that from, from you, if you would like to have, as the current size, you would need to be referred to the ZBA for a variance. Alternatively, you could make the accessory building a little bit smaller to comply with the 50% and not need a variance.
Yeah, that's up to you.
Yeah, well, we can do some calculation and see if.
It's just a matter of whether he wants to sit in front of his own board.
I know.
Maybe we should, Bruce, get confirmed what the primary structure square footage is, so you can start.
Yeah, that was listed somewhere.
It's on the parcel, I think you pulled the parcel access.
It was on, yeah.
Like Brian, I say Brian, I'm sorry.
At least you didn't call him Tim. Which I might have done.
So, one comment I want to give now is.
One conversation.
Who's talking?
The chart is based off of the footprint of the primary, which is only, it's under 800 square foot, the primary is, so that's going to leave you at 400, say roughly, for an accessory structure. Right now, you're at 783, so I don't know if 400 or close to it's going to.
Wait, but the R15 is on the site where it talks about total square footage.
Right.
We just want to, the header changes depending on what's.
I can hear you, I'm sorry.
I was looking at the maximum square footage permitted for each accessory building in the chart, the top.
Yeah, based on total square footage of the principal building?
Yes.
Okay.
No, based on the footprint of the principal building.
But it's, it's different on the two different pages is what we're.
Yeah. It, it, there's slightly different.
Well, because that's an RD and a R, they're two different zones.
Right.
Right, and the top zone. Oh, you know what, I'm in the RD.
Who wrote that code?
Just killing me.
It's definitely time to normalize the.
Yeah, that would be a good idea.
Sizes of accessory buildings.
Hey, do you guys have a workshop? You guys have a workshop, don't you?
No, we don't.
Oh.
We have to go and get our education elsewhere.
Oh.
You could build it on your own lot.
Well, that's, that's something we might want to do in the future. Okay, it's a whole lot.
Is what, parcel?
John, is it, is it possible to refer us to the zoning board and if we don't end up needing it, you know, we can cancel or something or?
Is that a thing?
Yeah, if, if they end up revising their application to not need a variance, that would basically render the referral.
Yeah, all right.
Well, I mean, another question too is what is the actual square footage on the house, because we're basing this off of parcel access data and if you actually.
Well, yeah, I, I calculated it differently, which doesn't always agree with parcel access, but, but I'll, I'll go again and do a measurement and, you know, of both floors excluding the porches.
I just think you can go directly with Bruce, we'll have to confirm. Right. Or directly with me, I don't think we need to discuss what the.
I don't think we need to discuss what the primary structure square footage is here tonight, I think the building inspector and him can figure that out and work from there.
But if we look at the chart, even the RD chart, it really says R1-5. It doesn't say RD1-5.
Yeah, I think that's a mistake of all of them, but this one, the other side says R15.
Yes, motion to approve.
So, one other thing I want to bring up while we're on this.
I was going to risk.
I am, is pushing this back because attached to my letter was your neighbor. And they're basically have a garage close to the road and when they park in front of the garage doors, their vehicle hangs in the road.
Well, we have actually one car in my family now and we, we have an area where we can park it right next to our house, even if we're not putting it in the garage, which is, the problem with that is that garage is full of.
Well, that's, that's what happens with every garage, so whether you own it now or in the future.
This is Penn Zeta's old plumbing equipment is in there.
Freddie.
He does not allow his tenants to park in the garage.
Yeah, but, but John, we can also push the parking space further in a little bit.
You could push it, yeah, because my concern is somebody's going to, oh, let me just run inside, I'm going to pull in front of the garage and I'm going to have my, half my vehicle hanging in the road.
That's a good point.
But we, we do have another space though.
You have another space, but your tenants could pull up that are living there, so it's not just you anymore.
Right, right, right.
It's a good point.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so, so a little more work to do.
Okay, do we get the?
Oh, yeah, so referral, um, yeah, motion to refer this application to the zoning board for their potential variance.
Motion to refer application to ZBA.
Uh, do we need to get any more specific than that?
Size variance?
Just for the accessory.
Yeah, okay, so let's add that to the motion if we can. Amended motion.
Yeah, amended motion to refer applicant to ZBA for size variance on accessory structure.
Thank you, motion by Len.
Very well done.
Second by David, on a favor.
Hi.
Good to see you, thank you. Okay, what more fun do we have in store? Yeah, who'd have thought, I'd have thought that was going to be an easy one.
That happened on the prep call today too, we should have known this was going to happen.
Took almost as long as Beekman. Yeah. So, this is next agenda item, last agenda item, review of application for site plan approval, accessory dwelling unit, 21 High Street, submitted by Henry Zook. Good evening.
Good evening, the architect that is not Ari Segal. I'm David Freeman, I am the architect for the project.
Very good, nice to meet you.
So, a little bit simpler, um, we have an existing accessory garage structure building that the owner would like to convert into an accessory apartment, 21 High Street. The, let me see, I'll go through the easy parts. The house is owner occupied, so we will be adding that to the drawings. The accessory apartment will not be an Airbnb, so we will add that to the drawings. The accessory apartment is generously 972 square feet, that's measuring outside to outside. I'm not exactly sure how you measure, I can figure that out. And I think that's about it. The building does not, the existing structure does not conform to zoning code, but it doesn't have to, based on your Section H. If you want me to talk about the neighborhood, I can. The house, if I'm standing at this house, the house to the right is a multifamily, the houses in back are all townhouses, the houses to the left is an ongoing Airbnb bed and breakfast, art school undefined, opposite, there is a two-family house, there is an abandoned house and we finally get to opposite to the right, there is a one-family house. So, we are not changing much in the neighborhood.
I'm just curious, how much, are you doing any, is the applicant doing any modifications to the exterior of the building?
I'm putting in a new front door to the front of the building, that's shown on the elevations and then we're replacing windows in kind.
Yeah.
No changing siding, there is no changing roofing, there is no changing the lanterns, nothing.
It's up on High Street. Is this, is it the?
No, it's this one.
Why is it house blurred out?
It's blurred out, don't ask me why.
No.
Yep, there are, there are drawings.
But you can see the structure.
Is this the house that was in Nobody's Fool?
No.
I thought it was Melanie Griffith's house in Nobody's Fool, oh well.
No, that's not the one.
Shirley Botsford used to own both these homes.
Botsford Briar.
Pepto Palace, because it was in paint color next to hers. I think you can see the, even though the house is blurred out, I think you can see the.
Yeah, I'm, yep, I'm pretty familiar with it.
You'll see it in the drawings.
You can see the garage.
Anyway, Natalie, what do we got?
Okay, so one, I, Christian, does this, I feel like we always need a Part 1 EAF just to analyze the action or is that not required for, does the city not require this for accessory apartments?
It, it's a Type 2 action, so, under state regulations, so I don't think one's needed.
Okay, but, okay, but usually Part 1 is required still to describe the action and then you use that to.
Yeah.
I, I, I don't know if that's what, again, maybe this gets to David's earlier comments about streamlining what an application entails, but I thought Part 1 EAF is always required because that's the item that describes the action fully so that the body can then classify it. So, maybe an EAF Part 1 is required.
Thank you.
Exterior appearance, I did note the change between what I could see on Google Maps and the door proposed, so it does look like there's a minor exterior modification proposed for that door detail, so I think what would be helpful is a photo of existing to compare, existing to proposed. That I think would help, because you are in the HDLO, so there's, I think, just clarifying, there's minor modifications of the exterior will help with that review, and the board kind of go through that section that you've heard us talk a lot about tonight. And then my last two comments. Off-street parking, so it looks like there's three spaces, you're kind of parking three cars there across. Maybe it's a little, I'm not sure if it's tight there, like, do, what's the width of the-
30 feet.
It's 30 feet?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, I mean, I guess then that's fine, because technically parking spaces are nine, what?
Nine foot each?
Yeah, nine by 18, so you could still fit the kind of 27, plus some, a little bit of wiggle room there.
You can stack them there also.
Right, and I can, I can stack them and still, I mean, I-
And still be able to maneuver around. Okay. And then my last thing was noting the code requirements about what you said earlier in your intro, that the existing garage structure appears not to meet the side yard setbacks, but because of that section of the code of Section 8, it's permitted.
Okay, I did give you a little checklist on the front page, so, of the drawings. I will put up drawings on the screen next time.
That's okay.
At public hearing, so.
Oh, yeah, for the public hearing, that'd be a good idea. Thanks. So, you're the architect and the owner?
No, I'm the architect. Mr. Zuck is the owner.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Forgive me. Okay, Mr. Zuck.
So, the only other item I would add would be showing utilities to this garage, how it's gonna be serviced, and provide the construction details for that.
Do you need that? So typically, this is, again, typically I would do that for building permit, would you also like them for-
No, we want it. You know, I want to know, are you running services from the house over to that?
No.
Are you running actual new services in from the road? And we want the construction details, so that would be part of the engineering at this point.
Fine. And I, I do have a question, so this is more, I don't want to open a can of worms. I just, so just your two notes need to go on the drawings, owner doesn't need to sign anything as far as-
Well, I think my notes work in conjunction with hers.
Right, no, the two, the notes about the owner occupying and no Airbnb, that doesn't, the owner doesn't need to sign anything for that.
No, they just need to follow the-
Some towns do, some towns do, so.
That requirement is also in the city code?
Oh, I know, it's on my draw, it's on my drawings.
Yeah.
Right now, it's just-
No, the, the city doesn't have any requirement that owners sign anything.
Like I say, some towns do, so I-
No, I could see, so the owner, you signed this, you did know.
Yeah.
I've seen, I've seen those, I think some towns down south have those, Westchester.
Yeah, high park.
But, one of the things I want to compliment you on is this checklist in making narrative statements, right? So that anybody without having to reference the code knows exactly in plain English what you're doing, right? And why it's compliant, and the check says it's compliant, it makes it so easy for everybody. And you did the work, everybody else just has to approve and be passingly familiar not, with all the section numbers, but, you know, with the, and not have to look up a table every time.
You're preaching to the choir, Kevin.
Yeah. I'm just saying.
Thank you.
It would make everybody's life easier.
Yes, no one would disagree with you.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm making a hard case for this.
So, yes.
For, for the EAF, you've just used this short EAF.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
It's easy.
Okay, um, we could discuss noticing, um, public hearing for next month. Board, any thoughts, discussion on the matter, or otherwise a motion?
Motion.
Who? How do we do that? Motion, but who wants it?
I'll give it to David.
Motion by David, second by-
Karen.
Karen, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then, is there anything else?
Would the board be inclined to consider directing an approval resolution?
Yeah, let's draft, why not?
Motion to draft, approve, approval resolution.
Motion to draft by Len.
Second.
Second by Kevin, all in favor?
Aye. Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, David. Okay. You guys taking off? You gonna leave us hanging for architectural review?
Where did that saying ever come from, anyway?
Motion Len, second Kevin.
But then you wouldn't be opening a can.
Good night, you too.
Okay, we gotta move on. Good night, guys. Safe home, thank you. Okay, architectural review, certificate of, guys?
Oh, we did a miscellaneous already, right?
Yeah, certificate of appropriateness, 139 Main Street, assigned. Good evening, thanks for sticking around for all the fun.
Always.
Good times. So, the Grape Rebellion Dessert and Wine Bar, you got a sign here.
It's big, does the side meet, does the size meet the sign code?
Four foot by four foot.
Brian?
I'm sorry?
The sign is four foot by four foot, does that meet?
It does.
Okay. It's lovely.
So, this is a blade sign hanging on-
Where's it going? Oh, I see, sorry.
Flag.
Yeah, and it's just-
Oh, this is the-
This is at the, the banquet.
A lot of signs.
Yeah.
Now it's just one, or two.
So, what, what kind of wines?
It's cute.
What kind of wines?
Yeah.
Uh, right now, we have veteran-owned wineries that we're shipping in, I haven't actually tried any, but I'm sure they're delicious. I don't know, come back.
So, it looks as though you're hanging this on the existing-
Yes.
-hanger, whatever you call it?
Flag.
Yeah, good night, thank you so much, good to see you, Chris.
Take your, Chris, bracket.
Bracket, thank you. Lose my ability to-
I think it looks lovely.
It's a beautiful sign. So, any questions, other comments for the applicant? Otherwise, I'll accept a motion to approve.
Motion?
Motion to approve by Kevin, second by James, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Great, thanks, Brian.
Thanks for your work, we're all on our own helping out, right? Yeah, as all say.
Okay, next item on the agenda, new single-family home, 57 Town Street, Townsend Street, excuse me, hi, welcome back.
Oh, God.
We have the streetscape.
That's like the neighborhood.
Yeah.
Ooh.
This is what we were talking about, that you basically made your own context. You've created your own context to be similar or dissimilar from.
Okay, sorry, I don't know, it's just we're punching it.
They've been a lot. He's been here many times.
Yes, uh, let's see. So, tech, really, is this the last time? Oh, this house is a little bit different.
Is there another one like that in the, in the streetscape yet? I'm just trying to, there's already one with that same kind of-
When I was on Streetscape, it is the Streetscape.
That's the context.
Sorry. Thanks, so there is one with that, already with that kind of feature window layout.
Okay, I don't, I don't actually remember that one, me either. Did you sneak that one in?
Yeah, yeah, you snuck that one in.
All right.
Oh, God.
All right, any thoughts, observations, questions?
Is it a duplicate? This one is a duplicate of-
Similar.
Windows are similar, but the side treatments are different.
Okay.
You know, I gave one, one of the notes I gave, and I'm not, I don't think it's the end of the world, was just that the porch should be either inside or outside of the, you know, the outside of the exterior walls. Okay.
And he's just building one lot, or like a lot of?
Oh, okay, see, I think it looks better, right?
Oh, damn.
It's, it, those are little details, you just-
Moving on.
Make all the difference, anyway.
So, he's done this before.
Oh, and that one's goes on, okay.
The only comment I have is the window over the door in relation to everything else on facade seems a little small.
Well, it's a closet actually up there.
Oh, that's unfortunate.
It's a closet?
With a window?
Natalie said it's her favorite place in her apartment.
Gotcha.
This is the Brett model. Have you sold all the homes you've built?
Wait, this, let's see.
Yeah.
This is a reverse of your floor plan.
Oh, yeah, that one is.
Not my favorite, but-
Wait, the floor plan is what is happening?
This is a, so Townsend, is this near where the other development hasn't been constructed yet?
Correct, yes, this is the entrance into that, yes.
Did you build the house where they wanted your easement?
There was a lot that they wanted an easement on? Did that ever get resolved? I'm just curious. I mean, this has no bearing on this.
The townhouses.
For the, for the, whatever it was, that big townhouse thing on the- You have a house there now? Okay, I'm just, I'm just curious, because sometimes people have asked me about that project and its progress. Okay.
Okay, let's, let's stay with the house.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. I, I'm sorry I brought it up, I'm just curious.
Um, okay. Anything else for the applicant? Otherwise, I'll accept a motion to approve.
Motion.
Motion to approve by David.
Seconded.